All right, folks, it's ten after six. Thank you for your patience as we get settled. And some folks are going to continue to trickle in. It's an unusual start time for the Commission. Generally, it's seven o'clock, but because we only have this facility for a limited amount of time, we wanted to make sure we got to jump on things. I believe the church has set a ten thirty PM time for the building to be emptied, so just want to make you aware of that. That pretty much gives us a ten fifteen, ten twenty hard stop time, and we're going to try to do everything we can to make that happen and still make sure we hear from everybody and have time for deliberations. At this time, I'll call the November seventh, twenty twenty-three City of Ormond Beach, Florida City Commission meeting to order. Like I said, it is about ten minutes after six, and we were set advertised to start at six PM. You can always start a meeting late. You're not allowed to start a meeting early because of the advertising requirements, but so here we are. Just to let you know, I think you know this already, our planning staff, the Planning and Building Department, served as your greeters tonight, so I hope you felt welcomed as you came in. Thank you to Calvary Christian Center for hosting us. They had a facility that was big enough to fit everybody comfortably, and we appreciate appreciate that. I'd like to introduce the folks who are sitting up in front of you to my right, your left, Assistant City Clerk Taylor Lockhart, our Commissioner from Zone One, Lori Tolland.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome.
Commissioner from Zone Two, Travis Sargent.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome.
Commissioner from Zone Three, Susan Persis.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome.
Susan's to my left and your right. And then our Deputy Mayor and Zone Four Commissioner, Harold Brierley.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome.
Assistant City Manager Claire Whitley, City Attorney Randy Hayes, and for those of you listening online, Mayor Bill Partington. We also are lucky and blessed tonight to have our Police Captain Chris Ruse and Deputy Fire Chief Nate Cordier down in front. Thank you, gentlemen.[821.75][821.75][applause] At this time, if you would, please silence your cellphones, rise for the invocation given by Chaplain Sam Mercado from Advent Health, and that'll be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Almighty God, we gather here today to make decisions for our community. May we use only our best skills and judgment, keeping ourselves impartial and neutral as we consider the merits and pitfalls of each matter that is placed before us. May we act in accordance with what is best for our community and our fellow citizens. And we ask your blessing and guidance on our city leaders as they make these decisions in behalf of our community. In your holy name we pray. Amen.
Amen.[880.01][880.01][applause]
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
All right, we are on proclamations. I'm standing on the X like they told me. Our hometown heroes. We're lucky and blessed in Ormond Beach to have both fire, police, and public safety officials who care so much about our city. I'm going to ask Captain Ruse to come forward, and Nate, come on forward as well. Going to present you both as representatives of the departments with our proclamation. Recognizing our hometown heroes, whereas the City of Ormond Beach has a rich history of honoring veterans with Memorial Day and Veterans Day celebrations, recognizing World War II, Korean War, and Vietnam veterans. And whereas in August of two thousand eighteen, the City Commission approved the Hometown Heroes Military Appreciation Banner Program, this program honors and pays tribute to Ormond Beach's military heroes for their sacrifice and service to our country and the nation's armed services. The program allows Ormond Beach residents the opportunity to honor these heroes who are active duty, honorably discharged, or lost their life in the line of duty. Whereas Halifax Health has been a partner in the Hometown Heroes Military Appreciation Banner Program, this being just one of the many ways Halifax Health continues to show ongoing dedicated support for our city, community, and the families. And whereas throughout the month of November, the city displays double-sided banners on the Granada Bridge to publicly express gratitude for ninety-seven service members, each personalized banner showcases a photo of the honoree, branch of service, rank, and years of service. And whereas paying tribute to these extraordinary heroes, the city held a drive-through luncheon on November fourth, twenty twenty-three, attended by the entire Commission and many of our staff members. Each honoree or family received a keepsake replica of the Granada Bridge banner to serve as a reminder of the honoree's service and the city's gratitude. Now, therefore, I, Bill Partington, Mayor of the City of Ormond Beach, Florida, on behalf of the entire Commission, do hereby proclaim the month of November twenty twenty-three as a time to celebrate the hometown heroes in the City of Ormond Beach and urge all citizens to show appreciation towards these heroes for their sacrifice and steadfast service. Thank you both very much.[1065.64][1065.64][applause] All right, now we are at Audience Remarks. Each participant is welcome to speak on items on or off the agenda, and we have a few cards. We'll start tonight with Melissa Horan. Hello.
My name is Melissa Horan. I am a recent re-resident of Ormond Beach. I grew up just down the street, and I love this town so much that we're back. But in two thousand and three, I had an opportunity to transfer to the state of Connecticut with my employer. And so my husband and I took a long, deep look at what that move would look like. We researched towns and taxes and schools and crime stats, and we zeroed in on this picturesque town that fit our lives perfectly, and we decided to move up there and raise our family. And at times, I couldn't believe that we really lived in this amazing, picturesque New England town. It looked like something out of a Hallmark movie. I couldn't believe the foliage. I couldn't believe how lucky I was to live there. So we settled in. We were thriving, had two kids, and we're happy as clams until the morning, an early morning in December of two thousand and twelve. Because that picturesque town that we took so much time to pick out, to raise our family in, was Sandy Hook, Connecticut. And my son was a seven-year-old student at Sandy Hook Elementary. And I'm here just to tell you to please never say never. We didn't have the opportunity to mitigate risks to what happened to our community, and I'm not here to talk about any details of my family or my community or the impact it had on my son. What I'm here to state is that you should take every opportunity and look through this at every lens at your disposal to make sure that you mitigate all the risks. Because you, you, right now, you have that opportunity to make choices. We didn't have a choice, but it can happen anywhere. It literally can happen. Tragedy can strike anywhere. And I just want everybody on this panel, everybody that is making the decisions, to listen to these people. And thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you. Melissa, next is Lindsay Pate.
Good evening, Lindsay Pate, proud Ormond Beach resident. I just want to share a moment of gratitude for Mr. Partington and Ms. Shanahan. I saw them this morning at the county meeting, and Mr. Partington, Mayor Partington, had the opportunity to share our concerns with the ISBA, and he spoke eloquently, and he held steadfast in his beliefs of why an ISBA wouldn't benefit the City of Ormond Beach as an option in fighting Belvedere terminals. So I just want to say I thank you for that. I understand that the city has put their neck out there more so than others, and it's noted. And I know that took up time from your day, and you were kind of grilled up there, but you did a great job, and I feel like you did a nice job of representing myself and others in this continued conversation about the fuel farm.
Thank you, Lindsay. Rebecca Mongali.
Hello. Thanks for having me tonight. I don't want to be repetitive and share information that we've heard, and thank you so much for what you did today. I couldn't make it, but I was watching a little bit here and there at work. Okay, so I had a little depiction of a gas tank that I wanted to share, but unfortunately couldn't put it up there on the screen. But what I'll tell you is that I've spoken to a lot of people in the community, and they think, there's some people who believe that gas prices are going to be lowered because of Belvedere making its roots here in Ormond Beach. And that's a misconception that I want to clear up. That is actually not the case. So this is from the Energy Information Administration, and it's a gasoline and diesel fuel update. And basically, what it is, is it's a gas tank, and it's showing you the average price of gasoline, twenty thirteen to twenty twenty-two versus the most recent end-of-year data from twenty twenty-two. Most of gas price, fifty-three point nine percent back in the early two thousand thirteen's and so on, were determined by crude oil, which makes up fifty-three point nine percent of that price. Seventeen point one percent is from federal and state taxes. Fourteen point six percent is from distribution and marketing, and fourteen point five percent is from refining costs and profits. Now, if we fast forward to the end of twenty twenty-two, gas price skyrocketed. But the catch to that is that the only thing that kind of went up was crude oil price went up by fifty-seven point one percent. Refining cost also went up a little bit by seventeen to seventeen point seven percent. However, distribution and marketing and federal and state taxes went down, but gas prices went up. So for the people out there who think bringing Belvedere to this area is going to lower the gas price, it will not. It is going to stay right about the same. There is a town in Tennessee, Dickens Dixon County, Tennessee, where they fought similar fights that we're fighting. And they unfortunately had to deal with a seventeen million gallon gas storage facility being put in their town. And speaking to the guy who spearheaded that campaign over there in their area, their gas prices is not lower because of the fuel terminal. Their gas prices are lower because Tennessee has lower state taxes, and their local taxes are also lower. So for those of us who really want to know the truth, your gas price is not going to go down because of Belvedere. Just want to keep the information going. Thank you.
Thank you. Or is it Kason? I'm not sure. Travis. All right. Kason McFadden, I'm sorry.
McFerrin. Okay. You ready?
My name is Kason McFerrin. I am seven years old, and I wanted to tell you guys to thank you for city officials and mayor for all you care you are doing to stop the fuel farm. We, the kids of Ormond Beach, need you. Thank you.
Thank you, Kason. Connie Colby?
Good evening. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for what you did this morning. I didn't get to see all of it. I could hear part of it towards the end and the discussion that followed, which was eye-opening. What I would like to address tonight is the way that some of the items are listed on the agenda that we get at some of the meetings. And I would like to ask that some of them be more detailed so that we actually know without having to go through five hundred pages to figure out what you guys have to figure out. And the one I'm particularly interested in, or will use as an example, is from the October seventeenth meeting, in which there was an item that was listed as just the City of Ormond Beach Legislative Action Agenda, Staff Contact Information was Brian Rodemecker, Economic Development, and it was dispositioned, it was approved. That particular item, if you actually went to the agenda packet, was actually one that was talking about relocating the Police Department. And I think if people had seen that on this particular agenda, you would have had people talking about that, because they were talking about a categories three storm surge, which hasn't happened around here ever. And relocating the Police Department, in my opinion, it's a perfect location now. You can get to Beachside. You can go up US one to one way. You can go up Granada to the other side of town. And not to mitigate anything the police do, because couldn't do without them, but if they need other facilities, like a place where they do their exercises and training and everything, I'm perfectly great with that, but maybe put it someplace outside of town. If you look at where the crimes take place in this town that I'm aware of, they seem to be around Beach Street area, Young Street, Ridgewood, Hand Avenue. And I think we need to leave them where they are for now. Thank you.
Thank you, Connie. Next is Fran Canfield. Fran Canfield. We'll move on to Councilman Troy Kent, Belushi County Councilman Troy
Good evening, Honorable Mayor Partington, Commissioners Tolland, Sargent, Persis, and Brierley. Joyce Shanahan, where is she? She's not here right now? Okay, well, I wanted to thank her as well. Commission, I wanted to take a quick moment. We just got done with our council meeting, but I wanted to take a quick moment on my way home. but I wanted to take a quick moment on my way home to stop and personally thank each and every one of you. Thank you for believing and making a change in Volusia County with our dog-friendly section on our beach. This commission unanimously supported it, and you all showed up on Saturday morning. It's the biggest change the beach has seen as far as allowing dogs on a pet-friendly section for dogs in thirty-six years. We have point six of a mile, thanks to the county council, but also a big thank you to each and every one of you. You stepped up, you showed up, you spoke up, and you helped implement a really positive change. And I just wanted to show up tonight and give you two words. Thank you. If I can help your community with anything, you all have my number. Call me. Have a great evening.
Thank you, Councilman.
Mr. Mayor.
Deputy Mayor Brierly.
Councilman Kent, we want to thank you for effecting that change. You said you want to do it. You went to the county council. You got it done. Thank you, sir.
Thanks. Thanks, Deputy Mayor.
All right. That is all the public comment cards I have. I'll try Fran Canfield again one last time and assume that they are waving. We'll go to the minutes, approval of the minutes from the October seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-three city commission meeting. They've been sent to the commission for review, also posted to the city's website. Any additions, deletions, or corrections?
Move approval. Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign, and we'll show those passing unanimously. The next item on the agenda is a community redevelopment item. The city commission in Ormond Beach serves as the Community Redevelopment Agency of the city and must review these items and make a recommendation as the CRA. Therefore, at this time, we will recess the city commission meeting and call the CRA meeting to order. As chairman of the CRA, I'll open the public hearings and ask the secretary to read seven A.
Resolution number two thousand twenty-three dash one ninety-five, a resolution of the city commission also acting as the Community Redevelopment Agency of the City of Ormond Beach, Florida, approving and authorizing the execution of an amendment to agreement for streetscape and banding repair with PNS Paving Inc. regarding the Granada Boulevard Streetscape Banding Repair Project under bid number two thousand twenty-two dash nineteen, authorizing payment therefore and setting forth an effective date. This is resolution number two thousand twenty-three dash one nine five, read by title only.
Thank you, Taylor. And CRA board, I can ask our Public Works Director, Sean Finley, to speak on this item if you have any questions?
No questions.
If not, I don't have any cards.
I move approval of resolution number two thousand twenty-three dash one nine five.
Commissioner Persis made a motion to recommend approval to the Ormond Beach City Commission of resolution number two thousand twenty-three dash one ninety-five, a resolution of the CRA. And I believe I heard Travis.
Second.
Commissioner Sargent seconded that. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign, and we'll show that passing unanimously as well. We'll close the public hearings, reconvene the city commission meeting, and we are now at the consent agenda. Does any commissioner wish to pull any item from the consent agenda?
I move approval of the consent agenda.
Second.
Please call the vote.
Commissioner Tolland?
Yes.
Commissioner Sargent?
Yes.
Commissioner Persis?
Yes.
Commissioner Brierly?
Yes.
Mayor Partington?
Yes. Would any commissioner like to comment on any of the consent agenda items? Commissioner Sargent?
I'd like to comment on G and H. This year, we increased our taxes to provide funding for leisure services for some items. And these two items, LED lighting at the softball quads, and also the redoing, the renovation of the baseball fields, two through five at the Nova Community Park. This is for applying for echo grants for dollar-for-dollar match. I just think it's a great thing that we're moving forward with this in a quick manner. And just exciting to see. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Sargent, anyone else? If not, we'll move to public hearings. I will open the public hearings and ask our clerk to read nine A, please.
Ordinance number two thousand twenty-three dash fifty-one, an ordinance of the city commission of the City of Ormond Beach, Florida, vacating a portion of Benton Street, a platted public right-of-way south of Pennsylvania Avenue located between Volusia County parcel identification numbers three one three six dash zero one dash zero eight dash zero zero one zero, three one three six dash zero one dash zero seven dash zero zero one zero, and three one three six dash zero one dash zero one dash zero zero two one, and along Volusia County parcel identification numbers three one three six dash zero one dash zero one dash zero zero two one, and three one three six dash zero one dash two one dash zero zero five zero, repealing all inconsistent ordinances or parts thereof, providing for recrodation and transmittal and setting forth an effective date. This is the second reading of ordinance number two thousand twenty-three dash fifty-one, read by title only.
Thank you. This is the second reading. I don't have any cards on nine A.
Mr. Mayor, I move approval of ordinance number two thousand twenty-three dash fifty-one.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Commissioner Sargent?
Yes.
Commissioner Persis?
Yes.
Commissioner Brierly?
Yes.
Commissioner Tolland?
Yes.
Mayor Partington?
Yes. Nine B.
Ordinance number two thousand twenty-three dash fifty-two, an ordinance of the city commission of the City of Ormond Beach, Florida, vacating a portion of Hammond Street, a platted public right-of-way south of Pennsylvania Avenue and north of Plantation Oaks Boulevard located between Volusia County parcel identification numbers three one two five dash zero eight dash zero zero dash zero zero one four, three one three six dash zero one dash zero seven dash zero zero one zero, and three one three six dash zero one dash zero one dash zero zero two one, repealing all inconsistent ordinances or parts thereof, providing for recrodation and transmittal and setting forth an effective date. This is the second reading of ordinance number two thousand twenty-three dash fifty-two, read by title only.
Thank you. Again, I don't have any cards. This is a second reading. I just need a motion and a second.
Move approval. Second.
Any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Commissioner Persis?
Yes.
Commissioner Brierly?
Yes.
Commissioner Tolland?
Yes.
Commissioner Sargent?
Yes.
Mayor Partington?
Yes. Nine C.
Ordinance number two thousand twenty-three dash fifty-three, an ordinance of the city commission of the City of Ormond Beach, Florida, vacating a portion of Rosemary Street, a platted public right-of-way south of Pennsylvania Avenue located between Volusia County parcel identification numbers three one three six dash zero one dash zero nine dash zero zero one, and three one three six dash zero one dash zero eight dash zero zero one zero, repealing all inconsistent ordinances or parts thereof, providing for recrodation and transmittal and setting forth an effective date. This is the second reading of ordinance number two thousand twenty-three dash fifty-three, read by title only.
Thank you, Taylor. Again, it is a second reading. I don't have any cards.
I move approval.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Commissioner Brierly?
Yes.
Commissioner Tolland?
Yes.
Commissioner Sargent?
Yes.
Commissioner Persis?
Yes.
Mayor Partington?
Yes. And, Commissioner, we have one item I probably should have taken before the consent agenda. I'm going to ask Randy's permission to squeeze it in now. It's ten A, second reading of ordinances. Randy, do I need to close the public hearings in order to accomplish that with the commission's permission?
You can just recess from the public hearing for the purpose of doing item ten A and then.
All right. We'll take a quick recess, and I will ask our clerk to read ten A.
Ordinance number two thousand twenty-three dash fifty-four, an ordinance amending the annual budget for fiscal year two thousand twenty-two dash two thousand twenty-three by amending the general fund zero zero one, downtown redevelopment trust fund one zero four, stormwater utility fund one zero seven, airport fund one zero eight, local law enforcement trust fund one zero nine, pension contribution pass-through fund one thirteen, recreation facility fee fund one fifteen, grants fund one sixteen, twenty-ten beachfront park bond fund two twenty, capital improvements fund three zero one, equipment and renewal replacement fund three zero two, public safety and vehicle and equipment fund three zero five, transportation improvements fund three zero eight, facilities renewal and replacement fund three one seven, water and wastewater fund four zero one, renewal and replacement fund four zero nine, solid waste fund four six zero, and general liability fund five zero four, and setting forth an effective date. This is the second reading of ordinance number two thousand twenty-three dash fifty-four, read by title only.
Thank you. Commissioner Kelly McGuire is here. If there are any questions, this is a second reading. I do not have any cards on.
Move approval.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Commissioner Tolland?
Yes.
Commissioner Sargent?
Yes.
Commissioner Persis?
Yes.
Commissioner Brierly?
Yes.
Mayor Partington?
Yes. Thank you. And we will reopen the public hearings. The public hearings are now open again, and we are on nine D.
Ordinance number two thousand twenty-three dash fifty-five, an ordinance authorizing the execution and issuance of a planned residential development development order for the Timoca Reserve subdivision, authorizing the development of two hundred and seventy-two lots on one hundred and forty-seven point nine four plus or minus acres to be located at twenty Timoca Oaks Boulevard, establishing conditions and expiration of approval and setting forth an effective date. This is the first reading of ordinance number two thousand twenty-three dash fifty-five, read by title only.
Thank you, Taylor. And because this is a little bit complicated, I'm going to go to our city attorney, Randy Hayes, and ask him to give us some background on this item.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a, an application for development under a planned residential development zoning district application. And it's been before the planning board, I think, at three meetings, three public hearings, and so now it's coming to you for the final decision. It's obviously very important to the landowner, to the residents, and to the community at large. It was helpful to the planning board to hit some of the high points of what these procedures entail. You know, you do these things all the time, but we don't always get an opportunity to go through some of the finer details. And I'm not going to hit them all, but it would just help to talk about some of them so that the record is clear. And it's important to make sure that we have a clear record. Depending on whatever action the commission takes, whoever the reviewing body may be, it would be important to have a clear record. So I just want to hit some of the finer points. So this is an application for PRD Development Order. It's a quasi-judicial proceeding. This is not a rezoning matter. It's a rezoning is a completely different matter. I know you've had some or heard some discussion, probably offline elsewhere, regarding potential rezoning of the land, but this is not what you have before you. So your focus should be on the merits of the development application under PRD this You, this body gets to act as the final decision-maker. You get to weigh the evidence, so to speak. We'll talk a little bit about that in a minute. But you're not a court. You don't get to make legal determinations in the strict sense of what would occur in a courtroom. Formal rules of evidence do not apply, but there are rules that do apply in fairness of, you know, decorum and just providing opportunities for everybody to be heard. So part of your function will be to determine, to apply the standards of the comprehensive plan and the Land Development Code to the application and to weigh the evidence to see whether or not the applicant has met its burden to justify that the application is consistent with your complaint and your land development code. The evidence needs to be material and relevant to the issues. It can't be speculative or conjecture. It needs to be based on what you hear before you this evening. It should not be based on any extraneous information that you've heard or been provided outside of this public hearing proceeding, and that includes whether it's information from the applicant or information provided from a resident or anybody else. It needs to occur here. So competent substantial evidence is really that evidence is relevant material to the issues, and it may not be speculative. I'll give you some examples of what is good competent substantial evidence. Planning staff report, professional opinions from experts, and you'll hear some of that this evening. Your recommendation of the planning board, you can receive that as well. You know, maps and reports and other information when it's presented with testimony that kind of authenticates the veracity of the information that's being provided. Testimony from laypeople can be competent substantial evidence if it's fact-based. If it's speculative or conjecture, typically it is not. The commentary that you hear from attorneys, myself included, Mr. Merrill and Mr. Bear, that is not competent substantial evidence. It's instructive for you to take into consideration, but it is not competent substantial evidence, and it should not really weigh as a basis toward your decision. You need to exercise your independent judgment in that. So the applicant will have the initial burden. And the initial burden means that the applicant needs to show that the evidence supports the contention that the development would be consistent with the comp plan and the land development code. If you're satisfied that the applicant has met that burden, then the burden would shift over to those in opposition. The Timoca Oaks HOA has requested formal party intervenor status. It's a procedure under our land development code that allows affected parties in interest an opportunity to be heard and to assert formal legal standing. Timoca Oaks HOA has prevented, presented a timely request for that. The planning board received it and accepted its status as a party intervenor. Mr. Merrill was kind enough at the planning board level to stipulate to allow Timoca Oaks to appear as a party intervenor. And Rob, without assuming that there's no objection, that will be one of the two stipulations you're asked to accept this evening as well.
Thank you, Randy. Is there a motion to accept the two stipulations?
So, Mr. Mayor, if I may, the other stipulation would be to accept the experts as experts, qualified experts, for providing testimony in the relevant areas of study. We don't typically do this, but again, just trying to create a good record, I think it would be important to recognize that stipulation as well, and both parties have agreed to do that. And then when we get down a little farther into the outline here, then I'll turn it over to you, and then you can accept those at the appropriate time. So in terms of the witnesses, so a lot of times, we don't swear the witnesses. It's always recommended to do that. There's no requirement that you do that, but it's certainly helpful and instructive to a reviewing panel above this body in the event that there's any legal action by anyone. And then they'll understand whether the testimony was provided under oath or not. Whether you do so is your discretion, Mr. Mayor, but that's certainly a recommendation. The planning board did that as well. Your rules provide that in these instances, an applicant shall have up to twenty minutes to present its case in chief. And there are times when you've got a complicated matter and additional time is required. And it would be appropriate, if that were the case here, to grant additional time. I'm not sure Mr. Merrill's going to need the full twenty minutes. He talks fast, so I have every confidence that he can limit it to five minutes, right? There's a thumbs up there. And I would ask that, since the rules do not provide a time certain for a party intervenor status, that they be provided an equivalent amount of time, whether it's twenty minutes or less. And it worked well at the planning board level. I suspect it'll work well here as well. Lay witness testimony are typically limited to three minutes, and that's the standard rule. So voting conflicts, you know the rules there. You're required to vote unless you have a voting conflict that prohibits your vote. And that would ordinarily, you know, require some kind of a pecuniary gain to yourself or family member or principal from whom you work, living in or near in the vicinity of the area to be developed in and of itself. Without more, does not constitute a prohibited conflict. Job occupation in and of itself without more does not necessarily constitute a conflict as well. In terms of the order of business, actually, I want to talk a little bit about the disclosure requirement. So your code provides an opportunity for the commission to meet with the applicant, party intervenors, and other parties that may be affected in interest. And if you do so, then you just need to disclose on the record that you've met with those people. And this is a standard rule that you always comply with. I just want to restate that again. And so if anybody, if you met with the applicant or the party intervenor, then at the appropriate time, you should make that disclosure this evening.
I did.
Well, we're going to have a time to.
Oh, sorry.
No problem.
So in terms of the order of business this evening, Mayor, I'd recommend the following outline. You can switch it up any way that you prefer, but I'd remind everybody that wishes to speak to fill out a card, so you've got some cards. to fill out a card, so you've got some cards. If you wish to administer the oath, and the clerk can do that. I'm assuming that you're qualified to administer the oath? No?
She hasn't-
I don't think she's ever done it. Oh, she has a copy of it.
Okay. Well, I was assuming we would have the city clerk here. So, is Susan here? Okay, here we go. Our court reporter here. So there you go, Mayor.
She'll help us out. So, Commission, my inclination would be anybody who wants to provide testimony should be sworn. Randy, if it's okay, we could swear them as a group?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And to the audience, anybody who hasn't filled out a card but wants to speak on this item, please make sure you get a card and turn it in. Yes, ma'am.
I have one question, Randy. In the very beginning, you were talking about the two-
The two stipulations?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
And I, I understand, I, I, the second one I got, but I was couldn't hear you on the first. Could you repeat the first for me, please?
So, the, the first one is to accept the Timoco Oaks as a party intervenor in this proceeding. The second one would be just to recognize the experts-
The witnesses.
-that speak as experts without having to qualify them as experts. And ordinarily, that does not occur, but sometimes in contentious proceedings, it could occur. And so I think it's just helpful for the record that those stipulations be acknowledged and accepted at the appropriate time.
Thank you. There's a lot of echo up here, and that's why I'm struggling a little bit with the hearing. Sorry.
So in terms of the order of, on the outline, Mr. Mayor, it's your discretion. We could start with the planning director for, the planning director's presentation, followed by the applicant's presentation, followed by the party intervenor's presentation, and then the non-party or the late, late person's comments. And then you could provide the applicant with rebuttal. Typically, we would, up to ten minutes. I don't think that much time would necessarily be required. And then disclosures by the commission, unless you do it before then, followed by questions and discussions by the commission, and then determination of, of whatever action you wish to take by motion. And so, Mr. Mayor, turn it over to you, and you could, after you administer the oath, and you could move to, to accept the two stipulations.
Great. Thank you. Deputy Mayor Brierley?
I will just make a motion that we accept the two stipulations. The outline is outlined by our city attorney.
Second.
Moved in seconded. Any discussion? That's intervenor status and experts, correct?
Yes, sir.
All right. Please call the vote.
Commissioner Sargent?
Yes.
Commissioner Persis?
Yes.
Commissioner Brierley?
Yes.
Commissioner Talland?
Yes.
Mayor Partington?
Yes, and, Commission, if it's your pleasure, could we have a motion to swear anyone providing testimony at this time as a group?
I move that we swear in anyone that provides testimony in this evening.
Second.
Moved in seconded. Any further discussion on that item? Please call the vote.
Commissioner Persis?
Yes.
Commissioner Brierley?
Yes.
Commissioner Talland?
Yes.
Commissioner Sargent?
Yes.
Mayor Partington?
Yes, and I'll ask our, not our court reporter, but the court reporter to go ahead and, I don't know if you need a microphone or not, but anybody who's going to be providing testimony, if you've filled out a card, please rise.
Hello, everybody. My name is Shaila Blakeney. I'm the court reporter today, but I'm also a notary, Florida notary public, and so therefore I'm going to swear everybody in simultaneously. So will everyone that intends to speak today, please raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Thank you.
Thank you all, and thank you, Madam Court Reporter. All right, I have twenty-six cards. Everybody's been sworn. We have our stipulations in place. At this time, I'll ask Planning Director Stephen Spraker, Randy, unless there's anything else on the-
Did, did you make a motion and seconded accept the two stipulations?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yes, sir. Stephen, you're up.
Good evening. Stephen Spraker, Planning Director with the city. So this, the application before you tonight is for the issuance of a development order. On the left-hand side, you can see the existing land use of the property at twenty Timoco Oaks Boulevard is low-density residential, and then on the right side, the zoning is planned residential development. The existing zoning does not have a development order. It expired. It was approved in two thousand and six and has since expired, which is the reason for the application tonight. Next slide, please. This is the process this, this application has gone through. It started with two community meetings before they actually submitted to the city. It was followed up with several meetings of the city's site plan review committee, which is the administrative committee that reviews development projects. A neighborhood meeting happened in February of this year, and as Mr. Hayes said, there's been three planning board meetings, which the recommendation at the planning board meeting was for denial. Tonight is the first reading of the city commission. A couple important points for this application. The planned development before you tonight is a zoning document, so it doesn't have the detailed engineer that you would typically see with a site plan. It shows lots, landscape buffers, open space, recreational areas, architectural standards. From that zoning document, a preliminary plat is then developed. So once those lot size and everything else is figured out, the engineers will do the detailed drawings, and it'll go back before neighborhood meeting, planning board, and city commission with as a preliminary plat. So what's before you tonight is just a, a zoning document. It's not going to have those detailed engineering drawings. Next slide, please. This is a site plan that was submitted by the applicant on September sixth. This is the same site plan that was reviewed by the planning board, and there have been no updates since the planning board. Next slide, please. Some key aspects. The property is almost a hundred and forty-eight acres. The proposed units is two hundred and seventy-two units, which equates to a density of one point eight-four. Key issue is the, the lot sizes. There is a mixture of lot sizes from eighty feet on the perimeter and then sixty feet on the interior of the property. A key part of the project is the fifty-foot buffer in the planting plan, shown in green at the perimeter of the property. The project is proposing a gated vehicular access, so it would be a gated community. It still would allow pedestrians to enter into the subdivisions, but the vehicles would be gated. There is a planned emergency access connection shown on the right-hand top of the site plan. There are no wetlands on the property. Next slide, please. The property is not in a designated floodplain such as A or AE. An environmental assessment has been provided within your packet. The project proposes thirty-four acres of natural preservation, shown in the dark green. There are a number of recreational areas, I think just over nine acres, also shown on the project. The applicants and their design professionals have worked to save the historic trees on the property. There has been a school concurrency determination by the Lusche County Schools, and there has been several traffic analysis. The traffic analysis was reviewed by an independent expert hired by the city, so we had our own professional traffic engineer review that traffic study. Next slide, please. There are two key issues for the site plan review committee. The first is the perimeter lot sizes. Staff has recommended a hundred-foot wide lots around the perimeter of the property. The applicant, again, is showing eighty-foot around the outside and then sixty-foot wide lots inside. Next slide, please. The other issue is the, how the fifty-foot buffer is planted. Whatever is existing would absolutely count towards their minimum requirements. The key is, is the areas that don't have that existing landscape material. Staff, through our city landscape architect, has recommended a type-six buffer, which has a certain amount of tree shrubs and, and ground cover. And we've also recommended that those areas provide irrigation. The applicant is seeking to do temporary irrigation, including water trucks, hand watering, and our opinion is that is not permitted by the code. That is something they are seeking through the planned development. Next slide, please. There has been a number of correspondence in your packet from both before the planning board, after the planning board meeting, and these focused on, on some very similar items, so we tried to summarize them. The compatibility with the existing Timoco Oaks subdivision was a key issue. The concern regarding the loss of, of property values, the loss of potential quality of life. There is detailed analysis in the packet that, there's an argument that Timoco Oaks should always be a golf course in perpetuity, so that's within your packet. The traffic concerns include the diamond intersection at St. Andrews Drive and Timoco Oaks Boulevard, the potential backups along Escondido condominiums near Nova Road, how construction traffic would be managed and the, and the potential impacts, and then the impacts into the trails, subdivision, and then to Timoco Oaks. The Home and Association for Timoco Oaks has expressed concerns regarding the ability to manage the common areas and how those buffers would be managed, and lastly, the concerns with the existing wildlife on the golf course property. Next slide, please. The planning board recommended denial, and there were five key issues. I just wanted to quickly highlight them. The first was the density and lot size, so there was concern regarding the number of proposed lots. They indicated support of a hundred-foot wide lots on the perimeter. They also expressed, which is a little different than staff, that all lots, including the interior lots, should have a larger lot size with additional lot square footage. They generally discussed a range between two hundred and two hundred and forty lots, although they didn't come up with an exact number. They just were looking to focus in a range which they might be able to support. Next slide, please. The second item, again, is the fifty-foot buffer. They supported a type-six buffer and the requirement of irrigation. Next slide, please. The planning board stated that the traffic analysis, in their opinion, was flawed based on evidence and testimony provided and their experiences. Again, key issues are the diamond at St. Andrews Drive and Timoco Oaks Boulevard, the impact to both Timoco Oaks and Trail subdivision, and then the intersection impact at Main Trail and West Granada Boulevard. Next slide, please. The architectural design was discussed at, I believe, all three meetings, and the planning board's concern was to provide a wide range of architectural styles. That way you don't have the same home or a same style repeated. The applicant has made changes to the architectural designs, but I think the planning board was looking for more details, more spacing, and more distance in between houses that could repeat the styles. Next slide, please. Finally, the driveways, which was a, a good point, staff thought, of having longer driveways, so you don't have short driveways, which then leads to parking in the streets. So one of the planning board members suggested to have longer driveways to allow stacking within the house lots and not on the street. Next slide, please. The planning board did recommend denial with a seven to zero vote. Site plan review committee members continue to recommend denial. The applicant is here. If there are any questions, I'm available, as is our city landscape architect.
Thank you. Any questions for Stephen?
Thank you.
Thank you, Stephen. We'll move to the applicant, Rob Merrill, on behalf of the applicant.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Rob Merrill with Cobb Cole Law Firm, here on behalf of the property owners. As I always say, for as long as he's been doing this, I think Steve's one of the best in business, and he does a great service for you guys, gave you a great summary. I'm not going to go through things over and over again that, that he said and we've said at the planning board a, a lot. You've got, I think somebody told me, two thousand pages of, of record on this, and, and you didn't see me really bring any experts, and you won't. So this is going to be relatively painless for you guys. I've got one page of notes, and I write like a five-year-old, so it's big type. And so this won't take long. I've got four slides. I think two of them overlap things that Steve's already, already given you, so this should be pretty quick. I'm going to start by, by thanking you guys, I mean, and the planning board. This has come a long way. You guys have a tough job. I think the decision tonight is pretty straightforward. I'm hoping that you guys are going to make a decision, or they'll at least tell us what you want from us. But I'll start by kind of going back almost forty years. Mr. Bear and I are, are good friends, neighbors. We were in law school together in nineteen eighty-five at University of Florida. I said that for the, all the Seminoles in the room. And, and at that time, we were both in environmental and, and land use courses, and the Growth Management Act happened, and it, it changed everything that he and I have done in this, in this world of land use and zoning since then. They essentially changed the name of it to the Community Planning Act. But it, I, I bring it up because I think it's directly relevant to, to what you guys have in front of you tonight. So I say that because one of the, the foundational principles that came out of that legislation was something we call the consistency doctrine. It talks about lots of things being consistent with each other and, and having to be that way. Your comprehensive plans being consistent with the regional plans, to be consistent with the state plans, and consistent with lots of other things internally. The most important of which I want to bring up to your attention tonight, which is the fact that your decisions on land planning items, zoning items, site plans, variances, all the things that, that affect land have to be consistent with your comprehensive plan. Randy said that's one of the two main things he said you need to be thinking about tonight, and I'm kind of preaching to the choir with you guys. You hear this every time a zoning case comes, becomes before you. But it's particularly relevant tonight because this piece of property, as Steve showed, as, as you can see on the left-hand side, has a low-density residential future land use classification and has had that for quite some time. So my clients over here who bought this golf course some time ago now, bought the golf course with the understanding that that said what it said. They also realized that the reason why that's not colored, it's black and white, is because there's no development order on this property right now. Doesn't mean they're not entitled to a development order. They just don't have one right now because the time ran out. So in this case, we're here to propose, as Randy said, a new development order. And, and I think most of the folks, one of the reasons why I want to talk about the Growth Management Act and, and, and the fact that it's almost forty years ago now is amazing, but maybe a lot of people in the room don't know about that. I think for sure I've learned, when I've been in this process for the last two years with several of the folks in the audience, and I want to, I should have at the beginning, but I'll thank all of the folks that have been involved in this process now. I, a lot of them at least were friends of mine at some point in time. Maybe we can patch up when this all ends, but, but I want to thank them for being part of this process. It's part of what we do, and, and we have done it, I think, to the nth degree in this particular case with all of the meetings that we've, we've been through. But I, but I want to point out that I think that, that this map over here was a surprise to a lot of people. I don't think they knew that there wasn't always going to be a golf course here. And I think the fact that they were surprised by that, my clients took that into consideration when they started this process back in, and I'm going to go to the second slide. I think, okay, I've got a coach in the back helping me with the slides. There's only four of them. I'm going to try to get it up there. Somebody cue the Jeopardy music. Sorry, guys. I'll keep talking while it's coming up to tell you that it, it, it mimics Steve's slide that he showed that was kind of the timeline of what we've been doing. We started this back in, in April of two thousand and twenty-one, when, when the property was purchased, and in May of two thousand and twenty-one, we started conversation both with the city staff and ultimately with the neighbors. There you go. So the third slide, the third piece there, talks about our start. And, you know, we decided, and I'm going back now to the decision-making of the ownership group, when we talked about the idea that we, we felt, everybody seemed surprised about the idea that this was always designated for housing. And we said, you know, in order to be respectful of the people that are around us that we know are surprised by this, we probably should come up with a custom plan that respects the neighbors. And so we started this process and this dialogue with them voluntarily. We did have one required neighborhood meeting that your code requires, but we had several, both small group meetings and large group meetings that some of you were at. So I, I don't want to go through too much of the, you know, regurgitation of all the, the dialogue that happened there, but it resulted in, in, in us deciding that, that we wanted to negotiate a zoning instead of just ask for a straight zoning. So we did, and as we went through that process, we got a lot of input from the neighbors and the neighborhood meetings. We got a lot of input from the planning board. There was a great deal of testimony by experts, and Randy talks about the qualifications, the experts, which we are part of your record. We gave, you know, the, the resumes of all of our experts to you guys, and they were accepted by the planning board, and they testified. I'm not going to ask them to retestify. You guys, I hope, have read through some of those documents. They testified about things like transportation impacts. You know, you guys might know Sands Lassiter. He's, he testifies in lots of hearings like this, and he's testified in this case to say that he believes that we're compliant and consistent with the comp plan as it relates to traffic concurrency and traffic impact. and currency and traffic impact. We had experts talk about the effect, because people asked us about the effect on the values of the surrounding homes if we built this project. The result that came from our experts is it's going to be better in terms of values. We talked about comprehensive plan consistency a lot and compatibility. We had a professional planner testify as to the consistency and the compatibility and that's in your record. You guys might know Hank Fishkind. He produced two different economic impact reports which have been shared with you guys, both personally and in the record. So those things are all there for you guys to think about as part of your deliberations tonight. Okay, well, I think they went to the next slide to speed me up, so I'll try to speed up. So the next slide... Uh-oh, don't go forward too fast. So that one is essentially sort of the most recent updates that we've done in terms of concessions we've made based on requests that we've gotten. In this case, these are requests that came from the city staff, SPRC or the planning board. And they include things like the, you know, the sidewalks that we agreed to do on both sides of the streets, going out to Nova Road, the traffic signal and expediting, the permitting and the timing for construction of that. And Steve talked about the architectural standards which have evolved in large part based on input we got from the city staff as well as the neighborhood. And so you have a lot of information and language about that that we're happy to answer any questions if you guys like. Okay, the next one? Okay, so these are the two things that are outstanding in terms of the list of things that the staff wanted from us for this PD to be perfect. So in a negotiation, nothing's perfect ultimately, right? I think you guys know that. So these are the last two items that were outstanding that I think Mr. Schrecker would tell you, and I think he has already said at the planning board at least once, if not more, that had we do these two things, he would recommend approval. And I think, you know, you might extrapolate from that 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 might have affected the planning board differently. But I'm going to just sort of summarize them and they were summarized by Steve to some extent. So we're talking about, I call it a wild buffer versus a manicured buffer. The type six buffer is a kind of a buffer, which the buffer I'm talking about is around the perimeter of the golf course. That's the place that's, I think, most sensitive. And so the type six buffer is what you would, well, maybe I shouldn't use the fuel depot as an example, but an industrial-type project next to a house. And so doesn't seem to really fit here, but in this case, I hope you guys had a chance to, if you haven't already, tour around the old golf course and see the houses and see the interface between them. But lots of people decided that they wanted to see the golf course and see the golfers go by and others kind of preferred their privacy and they let everything grow behind their houses. So some places there's a jungle, some places it's wide open. So what we've tried to do with our proposed buffer plan is fill in the gaps with what's there. Native Florida vegetation, we're going to water it for a certain period of time, and we also agreed to bond to make sure it takes, right? For two years, which we think one year's enough, but we doubled it. So that's what's before you tonight. And we've got our expert here if you'd like to talk about that and he's happy to delve into that further. You know, the other point that Steve talked about was the lot size. And I don't know that it's real complicated. Steve wants 100-foot lots, 100 by 100, which is 10,000 square feet. We want 80-foot by 125-foot lots on that perimeter, 10,000 square feet, but more in line with what the market wants in terms of where people want to put their houses. They want longer lots that are slightly narrower. We think that works in the marketplace. We could be forced to do it in a way that doesn't line up with the marketplace, but we prefer not to and that's a big reason why we're here tonight. So the next slide talks a little bit about the buffer if we were to do a more traditional house against a house in your land development code. So we're a house, residential subdivision is against another single-family residential subdivision. Your code says a six-foot buffer is required. So, and you'll see that's the lower of the two. And I apologize that it's hard to read. Younger people than I've made this PowerPoint and so I have to put my glasses on to see it. But the lower one has a, two trees, 20 shrubs and 20 ground covers per 100 feet. And the buffer that we're proposing has five trees and 50 shrubs without the ground cover. So part of the rationale there is, you know, when you go look at this, it's got grass all over the place, natural grass, and we didn't want to tear all that up, put sod down and then put a more manicured buffer. We want to plant trees that are going to grow and grow wild and fill in and actually create a visual buffer as opposed to a decorative buffer that you might see in the front of a shopping center. So that's kind of the gist of that difference. And again, Don Spence is here. He's the one who is the architect of this landscape plan. And so that's for you guys to decide tonight. So on the last slide, it's just kind of a summary of, you know, of what we're here for. You know, we've given you guys, I think, what we think is a custom zoning that we think is respectful of the neighbors. That was our idea and our objective starting this. You know, we hope that it promotes their home values. That's the idea, I think, in terms of bringing them a quality housing product. I think we are preserving natural features of the property like Steve talked about. We've gone to great lengths to wind the roads so they preserve the existing historic trees. We've made a plan that promotes people from a pedestrian connectivity standpoint where now we know they don't have sidewalks in Temoca Oaks, but we're going to put them in and we're going to allow people to use them in our project. We have parks, we have sidewalks that are going to go to Nova Road to put connectivity all the way to the shopping centers nearby, et cetera. As you know, we're planning on spending a great deal of money to put in a traffic signal that I think will greatly increase the way traffic flows in the neighborhood. So, you know, Randy cautioned me when I was going to the planning board and I was bringing with me a plan that we, that Zeb Conant Associates developed as a result of the neighbors telling us, what if you just built something like us, like Temoca Oaks? And so we said, well, what would that look like? Well, so we looked at Temoca Oaks, we looked at the zoning of Temoca Oaks and we said, here's the plan. Randy said, let's not show that plan. So we didn't and we won't. And I won't talk about it, other than to say, we're not talking about it because Randy asked me not to and I respect his legal judgment. But I can say, and he told me it would be appropriate to say, that certainly the R2 zoning classification is what's in Temoca Oaks. It is what was on this property before it was rezoned in 2006 to PRD. And in fact, we have a pending application in parallel with this for the R2 zoning. It's not what we want. In fact, you know, I think some of the ownership started thinking that would be the simplest way to do this. And then once we understood and got a feel for what the neighborhood wanted, we realized that negotiating the PD was the right approach and that's what I think we've done. I did, I did want to, because Randy, I think, I would have a license to quote from the staff report, hopefully. And this is actually the staff report from 2006, which says, "The subject property has a land use classification that allows up to 632 homes to be developed on the site. There could be approximately 300 homes developed on the golf course site based on the R2 zoning." So that's the previous city staff talking to the previous city commission about the previous zoning on this property. And I quote that because, not because I'm telling you about, you know, what we're going to do, but that's what was discussed when the decision was made back then and I think it's still relevant now. So I would ask you to think about it. Most importantly, and I'll close with this, this has been two years coming and this is the first time that we've been able to be in a place where somebody could say, here's what we want you to do and we would support the project if you did it. We've heard a whole lot of, here's what we want you to do. I mean, over and over and over again, and we've done a lot of, here's what we want you to do. A whole lot. You'll hear, I think, from some others that want more still, more things. And that's fine, that's their prerogative and we're happy to hear from them. But I'd really like to hear from you guys. This is kind of our moment and it's been a long time coming for the folks that invested in this property and want to invest further in Ormond Beach. So hopefully you guys will do us the courtesy of giving us your input, what you want from us, and then we can decide, you know, whether we can do it. Again, got a whole team of folks here. If you want questions now, we're happy to do that or wait until we hear from the public.
Thank you. I think we'll wait and we'll hear from the intervener and then move on to some rebuttal and then hear from the public.
Okay. Mr. Intervener?
Good evening, members of the commission. Dennis Baer on behalf of Temoca Oaks Homeowners Association, excuse me, I've got a little frog in my throat, in intervener status. And I guess the one thing that I do agree with Mr. Merrill on is that we appreciate the really extensive cooperation from your staff as we've gone through this process. It's not been an easy process, there's been a lot of controversy, a lot of disagreement, but your staff has gone above and beyond, first off, to allow us to participate, but second, I think, keeping the public informed about the proposals, about the changes, and most importantly, about how this process is going to work. As Rob, Mr. Merrill stated, we go way back, we don't always agree on projects. Actually, we're usually on the other side of issues. And I guess I'll address the last issue first on this, the threat of R2 zoning. I didn't think it was going to be discussed, it wasn't supposed to have been discussed at the planning board. We adamantly disagree that that's the only resolution if you don't approve this project tonight. You look at the comments of your planning board about how this is the hole in the middle of the donut, this is a very unique piece of property. And I'd also draw your attention to, and this really doesn't just go to the whole R2 issue, but to my client's interest in seeing that this property is properly developed. Back in April of 2022, we had an expert by the name of Daryl Forghey who provided comments to city staff. I worked with Mr. Forghey on other golf course conversions around the state. You know, you're not the first elected officials to deal with this issue. It's fairly commonplace now in other areas. I've dealt with the issue in St. John's County, Flagler County, so it's something that's occurring. Some jurisdictions have ordinances, others don't. But everybody recognizes that when you're talking about converting an existing golf course to residential use, it's a very unique and peculiar set of circumstances. So what Mr. Forghey said basically is that, you know, all of the homeowners in Temoca Oaks have relied in good faith for decades on the representations of the original developer in the city of Ormond Beach. Their property tax rates have been predicated upon the assumption that they and their successors and interests would continue to enjoy the proximity to an outstanding golf course in a serene and natural setting. He goes on to state that "the residential portions of a golf course development are designed concurrently and in unity with those of the course itself, which attracts golfers and prospective property owners and residents for whom the golf course provides both a recreational and an open space amenity." So really, my clients, when they purchase their homes, whether or not it was a correct assumption, but this is a common experience, expected that this would remain open space. So that's where we have significant disagreements with the developer over the issues of consistency and compatibility. Mr. Forghey defines under state law, compatibility is a condition in which land uses or conditions can coexist in relative proximity to each other in a stable fashion over time such that no use or condition is unduly negatively impacted directly or indirectly by another use or condition. That's why we request the buffer, that's why we requested the 100-foot wide lots. We have had extensive negotiations. Unfortunately, a lot of our proposals have been ignored. One of the ones that we had requested, and this is a common occurrence, in my 35 years of law practice in Flagler County and Volusia Counties, I get calls all the time, my neighbor's cutting down the buffer, the guy across the street's cutting down the oak tree that's in the buffer when the conservation easement. We had requested the ability that the homeowners association would have standing to complain about violations of the buffer. You know, Mr. Smith down the street is now cutting down or impacting the buffer. They never got back to us and agreed on what would be allowed and what wouldn't be allowed as far as enforcement. So I'm assuming they're rejecting that proposal. Mr. Horowski is going to come up and talk to you in a minute about our issue about architectural compatibility and having a variety of home uses on the property. We've also talked about the traffic issues, which are still unresolved. We did resolve one issue and that was the preservation of a lot of the large oak trees, which we really appreciate that occurring. But there's still a lot of other areas that need to be discussed and I think that's what your planning board recognized. And again, your planning board has a lot of experience in development issues, real estate development, real estate sales in the Ormond Beach community. And seven to nothing, they rejected the current proposal that's in front of you. And one of the comments that they kept coming back to is what were the entitlements previously on this property? Well, in 2006, even though Mr. Merrill acknowledged it, there could have been 600 homes, the proposal was significant recreational component and 119 residential units. So that's one of our arguments why it can't go back to R2 because of the unique location. You've got to have a significant recreational component and there's no automatic guarantee under Florida zoning law that you're entitled to R2. Our argument, if it went to that point in a court of law, would be that PRD is the best zoning for the property, given the unique circumstances that are associated with this particular location. So again, you know, we continue to try to negotiate with the landowner in good faith. I mentioned at the planning board that coming up with the R2 language was kind of the nuclear option. You don't like our bad project now from our perspective, we'll make it even worse, is kind of how my client saw it when it came up in our discussions. So instead of having conducted, you know, meaningful negotiations, we hit an impasse and that's why the decision is ultimately going to be up to you. In just a moment, I'm going to turn this over to Mr. Horowski, who is a planner with significant experience. His presentation's going to take about five or six minutes. I'd like to reserve a couple of minutes in rebuttal at the end just to have some final conclusions. Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name's Thomas Horowski. I live at 97 North St. Andrews Drive. I live in the neighborhood, but I do not live on the golf course. What I'd like to do is take the opportunity tonight to summarize a few of the remaining issues as we see them from the neighborhood perspective. What I'm going to say, I think you'll see tracks very well with the recommendations that you got from your planning board. And these are supported by written materials that have been previously submitted and are part of the massive record that we've managed to assemble for this project. The key issues that we want to briefly talk about, project size and density, compatibility of new housing with the existing neighborhood, buffers, housing design, and a couple of comments on traffic safety. It was interesting as I was preparing today, going back to the, when we first started making comments officially on the project, we had these same issues then. The key parts of many of these issues still remain unresolved from our perspective and we don't feel like we've moved the goalposts. You know Temoca Oaks as a high-quality residential neighborhood. We've got larger homes arranged on lots that allow for substantial space between the homes. House styles are really diverse. I mean, we have everything in there from Tudor to Florida vernacular to Craftsman to mid-century modern. For years, we even had one that was a Tyvek wrap house, but not that we're recommending that as a design. You know, the applicants, when they, if they build this project, they're going to be trading on the reputation of Temoca Oaks as a quality neighborhood and the new development needs to contribute to that reputation rather than detract from it. When looking at compatibility, it's important, I think, to remember this isn't an extension of the development pattern in the normal way you see it. This isn't the next property down the line where good subdivision design and a reasonable buffer will make them improve compatibility. The new development here is going to create a new heart in the center of our community. The way that the project is viewed is going to have wide-ranging impacts on the character of the community. If the new development is substantially different, it'll affect how the entire neighborhood is viewed. I did a memo back in February of this year, you'll find it in the report, where we talked about the compatibility elements of function, order, identity and appeal as applied to this project. And I'm not going to go into all of the details of that. But that lays, that gives some foundation about how we saw the compatibility issue. Project size and density has been an important issue because the number of housing units eventually constructed drives the off-site impacts. The applicants claim their project is far below the maximum density allowed by the comprehensive plan and that's true, but it's really not relevant as any reasonably sized lot, single-family development's never going to get near the maximum density anyway. The applicants claim in their written materials that the project density is less than the surrounding neighborhood. I think that's debatable. I think all of you got a report that one of our residents tied... I think all of you got a report that one of our residents, Tyler Brown, did detailing a density calculation and analysis which has been provided to you. The key finding is that density needs to be determined based on consistent basis of calculation. And I think to correctly calculate the density of the existing neighborhood, the golf course property needs to be included in that denominator, along with any other areas that are part of the lots of Tomoka Oaks. This is the methodology that they used when they got their density number. It's not the methodology that they used to get our density number. When the proper calculation is done, density is going to be closer to one unit per acre for the existing neighborhood. For whatever project is eventually built, compatibility with the neighborhood, as we've been discussing, is more than just density-driven, and it's more than just defined by the unit type as single-family housing. You know, most of our new developments that we see now are more monolithic in terms of materials, colors, building style than is Tomoka Oaks. This is why the neighborhood has pushed for design standards to be applied in a manner that generates a diversity of housing styles. The applicant has included some of these design standards, but the proposed standards omit the key item of spreading individual unit designs throughout the neighborhood rather than allowing them to be concentrated in a way that yields the monolithic look that we're trying to avoid. Their proposal would allow for essentially an every other lot development pattern using the same materials. Sorry, lost my place there. Lot sizes, where the two projects join together, is another area where the neighborhood is seeking compatible design. The neighbors agree with your staff recommendation that the most compatible design will result from perimeter lots meeting the same minimum widths as the existing neighborhood. Spacing of housing units is important to the overall look and feel of the neighborhood. Large houses on smaller lots with narrow side yards and narrow spacing between units is common with most new subdivisions and is not compatible with our existing neighborhood character. The proposed setbacks and lot coverages are similar to the R2 neighborhood dimensions, but on smaller lots, they're going to contribute to a denser appearance. We did some research in the property appraisers' records, and the average building coverage of a lot in Tomoka Oaks is between 20 and 25% of the lot area. The largest units that we have, the biggest houses that were built in the neighborhood, have from about 10 to 30% less building coverage than what would be the normal new house in the proposed development. The homes on smaller lots will be more massive in appearance and will have less private open space. As Mr. Baer has indicated, we have agreement on the size of the buffer, but disagreement on the density of the plantings and character of the buffer. We support the staff's position that a Type 6 buffer be provided and irrigated so that the buffer can serve as a continuation, insofar as it is able to do so, of the open space field that was once provided by the golf course and its current remnants. We believe that the heightened standards are justified by the injective nature of the proposed project. And finally, just a couple of words about traffic safety and why we have been pushing for some of these issues. The applicant did a model run that predicted the traffic on Tomoka Oaks Boulevard could be adequately served by the existing design. But the models really are limited in what they can consider. And I go back to one of my college professors noting, "The only thing you know about a model for sure is that the output is wrong because you can't completely predict life. The question is whether the information is useful." And in this case, the model doesn't analyze the difficulty of making legal turning movements around the Diamond Island. The traffic model doesn't know that there's a school bus stop at Tomoka Oaks Boulevard at North St. Andrews Drive. So we have students gathering along the road and parents parked in the area during pickup and times. The model doesn't know how dangerous a turning movement might be, just that it meets the time standard. This is why we've pushed for sidewalks on Tomoka Oaks Boulevard and why the island needs to be modified. The applicant's own traffic analysis found that a traffic circle is the best solution. Their proposal is the second-best option. These improvements are basic safety considerations that will benefit their future residents as much and maybe more than the neighborhood. We agree with the traffic signal at Nova Road being essential. We have some concerns about the proposed timing of the installation of the signal. Finally, you're going to hear a number of speakers from the neighborhood talk about their appearance and researches they've done about the project and impacts to the neighborhood. And I hope this summary offers you a framework for considering those comments, and I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you. Tom and Dennis, were you going to wrap up now, or do you want to come back during rebuttal after cards?
I would just ask for a few minutes after the cards are read. I'm sure Mr. Merrill will want to have the last word, so I would just ask for a few minutes before he gets an opportunity to do that.
Yes, sir. Very well. All right. Commission, we have 26 cards, possibly 27 speakers. There were two names on one card, so we'll see who wants to speak. And after that, we'll have the rebuttal, and then we can do our disclosures before we get into discussion, if that's okay with you. Okay. All right, with the cards, we'll get started. Number one is Carolyn Davis, and she'll be followed by Kirk Thrush.
Good evening. Carolyn Davis, 46 Oakmont Circle. Before I begin, I want to acknowledge and thank Steven Spraker for always quickly responding to our Tomoka Reserve questions. Steven, I want to publicly recognize your help and professionalism. Thank you. The next, my testimony I did want to state is based on fact. I recently was told by a prominent civic leader that if you get three attorneys in a room, you're going to get three different opinions. Well, almost 18 years ago, on October 3, 2006, there was a commission PRD hearing on this same property, attended by three attorneys who are sitting in this room tonight. Our city attorney, Randy Hayes, the current applicant's attorney, Rob Merrill, and attorney Bill Partington, a 2006 commissioner and our current mayor. In 2006, those same three attorneys actually did arrive at the same opinion that the Tomoka Oaks Golf Course property must be protected by restrictions and covenants built into their approved 2006 Tomoka Oaks Golf Village PRD Development Order, that the property's golf course land use remain a golf course or open space. Here we go again, same piece of property, same three attorneys, same questions regarding the use of the land. In 2005, city attorney Randy Hayes stated in an August 11 email that "a review of any development orders issued by the city for this property would be pertinent to review the property's current land use," and that was in 2005. The subsequent 2006 Development Order, recorded with Volusia County in Book 5944, page 2183, specifically states, "The owner shall provide for covenants and restrictions that restrict the golf course to open space and golf course use, and this use shall run with the real property." This 2006 Development Order expired in 2014, yet the order itself is still criteria, as identified by attorney Hayes in 2005, which the commission can and should cite to deny the 2022 Tomoka Reserve PRD application and any future PRD or R2 applications that do not retain the golf course green space.
Thank you, Carolyn. Your time has expired, and we're now at Kirk Thrush. Followed by Denise White.
Good evening. Just wanted to follow up on what Carolyn said, that I've lived in Escondido condominiums for 27 years now, and friends of ours, through tennis, it was actually their father that was involved in writing the deed restrictions, that Tomoka Oaks remain a golf course. So it's been my belief all along that that never went away. There's not been anything to override that. So, that being said, was also thinking of what's been proposed so far as far as traffic. With that being a golf course, if everybody in a foursome drove their own car, you'd have 72 cars, add another 20 for employees perhaps, and that would be the traffic flow. And again, it's typically recreational times, so it's weekends, evenings, it's not throughout the day. What's being proposed now with this density would be 1,000 trips. There's no way the Tomoka Oaks Boulevard can handle that volume, even with the traffic light. And one of the things that has changed also from when the golf course was developed, Nova was a two-lane road with a 35 mile an hour speed limit. Now it's four lanes, 45 miles an hour. So you've got a lot more traffic that was designated as an evacuation route. So if you're plunking in 272 homes, that's just going to add to the congestion and something that our neighborhood was not developed for. And just one last thing, thinking kind of outside of the box, is I don't deny the developer the right to make money. Believe that people should be able to have that opportunity. But my understanding is, the city of Ormond owns Riverbend Golf Course. I think we could make a deal, let the developer build the type of product he wants there. It would be safer. Airport Road certainly has the capability of handling that type of traffic. Make a deal with him where he gets that property, Ormond Beach gets Tomoka Oaks, and it's not developed, it becomes park land or something that's a public use. Thank you.
Thank you. Denise White, followed by Dale Riles.
Good evening. I'm Denise White, and I live at 9 Fox Run Trail. And I did take the oath if there's a question. Want to thank you for your time and service. What I'm concerned about is the negative effect on the health and safety, welfare and quality of life. I too believe that the developer has a right to build, but we as citizens also have a right, and there's thousands of us that are going to be affected by this decision. And that's why it needs to be carefully looked at. And as Mr. Baer stated, the planning board considered it a hole in a donut, and that's a really good way to look at it. And the 2006 city commissioner and planning board actually appeared to understand that and that you can't follow the normal regulations and rules, it just doesn't apply. We're talking about a 450-foot road from Nova to the entrance, and we've talked about the diamond. Think about the fact that our EMTs are on the fire trucks. How are we going to, with 600-plus homes in there, how is this going to be navigable? And then also relative to the traffic analysis, the traffic analysis says that 67% of the Tomoka Oaks people already go through the trails. Okay, what's going to happen to the remaining 33% when they can't get out to Nova Road? They're going to be going through the trails, winding, narrow, median-laden roads, and I, as a walker, can tell you how dangerous it is right now. And then talk about the children at the bus stops, the pickups and the drop-offs that we've heard about with the cars waiting, the parents waiting to pick them up. That's our health and safety. And so, in conclusion, what I'd like to say is, I really would ask that you consider our lives at risk with this additional 300 homes and our quality of life being affected negatively. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Denise. Dale Riles, followed by Ashley Dufreen.
Good evening. My name is Dale Riles. I'm at 20 Eagle Court in Tomoka Oaks. Been there for 34 years. My husband has been there since 1973. First of all, I want to just mention, my husband was twice in the hospital in May and also just in September. And because of the shortage, the overload of patients, the side walls on both sides of the emergency room were, just had beds with people in it because they were so overpacked with people coming in. My husband was in a room luckily in the ER and was there for a day and a half the first day, two days the second, I mean, the first time, two days, the second day, second time. So anyway, I think we do have to kind of consider the overload of the hospitals. And there's only two hospitals in east side of Volusia County. Also, just going back to 2006, when Dr. Costello was mayor at that point, and Mr. Mayor Partington, you were on the board and, or the commission. Anyway, you all came out and you saw the plans of what was planned to get a development order. There was nothing talked about 600 and something homes being developed there. It was always going to be a golf course, and there was only 118 units planned, if you want to call it units, because some of them were going to be a three-story condo-type of units on the driving course side with underground parking, so you would not even see a car. The other units were going to be little townhomes, and they were going to be hidden amongst the trees so people would not have any block of vision to the golf course to enjoy it. The house plans that they've got, the developer has planned, that when they go to sell this to prospective other builders to develop, are they going to be tied in to having to go by and the same rules of using the same plans so that the whole thing will be the same three to four plans? Are they going to want to have to do their own plans? And I think that, oh, and the sprinklers, they go to put in 272 homes, then they're going to want to do water, they're going to do wells. So then, I know in 2006 that it was talked about. Can I just finish the sentence?
Sure.
Okay. It was talked about that the golf course is used basically as a collection agent to go, use the water to go down to the aquifer.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Ashley Dufreen, followed by Angie Schull.
Ashley Dufren, 118 North St. Andrews Drive. Last time I stood before you, I was eight months pregnant to speak in opposition of the Velvadiere project. And tonight, I stand before you, having left my four-week-old with a sitter, to ensure I came tonight to speak in opposition of the Tomoka Reserve project. That is how important the outcome of this vote is to me. I have been involved with the deliberations of the golf course since the course was sold to the developers in 2021. I have been part of the Tomoka Oaks Golf Course Committee since day one, gone to every meeting with the developers. gone to every meeting with the developers that there have been. I have spoken at every meeting there has been. Needless to say, I'm very well-versed in what has gone on between the residents of Tamoka Oaks and the developers. And with that, I would like to call out two issues I keep reading about where the developers and hearing are trying to paint themselves as having tried so hard to work with us. One, the developers never submitted an official plan for 317 homes. The plan that they are referring to was shown at a meeting on July 15, 2021, and to quote Rob Merrill, "One to throw darts at." 317 homes was never given as an official plan. It was a conceptual mock-up that had yet to be, that had yet to take into account stormwater areas and other items needed in an official plan. Two, the R2 backup plan, which I like to call backup threat. I was at the meeting where the developers whipped this plan out for the first time as what I believe was a threat to get the Golf Course Committee to agree to the first official plan of 276 homes. At the end of that meeting, they told us it was not a threat, and they had not planned to move forward with an R2 plan, which clearly wasn't sincere because I read they submitted an application for a rezone to R2 and also heard tonight from Rob Merrill. So with that, the developers only reduced the density from 276 to 272 officially, not from the 300-plus I keep reading and hearing about. So I beg you commissioners to please see through the use of words and their attempt to make themselves out as having worked with us. Also, with the rezone application, I believe they are assuming that a golf course green space that has been around for eight decades should automatically be R2 so that a plan could easily be pushed through if they don't get their way tonight. And I'm also here to say that we never said we wanted R2 behind our home. In addition, I want to touch on Section 115 of Article 2, Administration and Enforcement of Ormond Beach's Land Development Code. The article outlines, end quote, "The proposed use will not substantially or permanently create a nuisance or deprive adjoining properties of adequate light and air, create excessive noise, odor, glare, or visual impacts on the neighborhood and adjoining properties." This code is one which you, our commissioners, are supposed to uphold. The current plan that is set forth in front of you will do everything that the pros should not. I also have pictures of my backyard I would like to share with you, if I can give it to the clerk, just to show you our unobstructed view and beauty of our backyards.
That'd be fine. Yep, thank you.
Okay.
And then Angie Shaw, followed by Dick Reed.
This is weird being on this side of the stage. Hi, my name's Angie Shaw. Mr. Mayor and Commissioners, I'm sure you know me as I've served on the planning board for almost seven years. I'm a native Floridian, a resident of Ormond Beach for 30 years, and a local real estate agent for 23. Two of my major concerns come down to density and traffic. The density of this project is not compatible with Tamoka Oaks and the surrounding area. The lot sizes are the main reason for this issue. The developer insists they cannot sell larger homes and larger lots, but every Realtor and builder in town will tell you that's not true. And a statelocked community in this beautiful property in the middle of Ormond Beach, close to all conveniences, would not only add value to this project, but it would also increase the value of the surrounding neighborhood. And as existing homes in Tamoka Oaks sell and turnover happens, the new homeowners will step in and make improvements and upgrades to their existing homes. If houses have to be built on this land, we need to think about how it will affect the future. This is a very unique property and a unique opportunity to build something that's incredible. Future residential growth is already in process in Plantation Oaks, and they will eventually have over 1,700 homes there. All these lots are 60 to 80-foot lots. The Ormond's Crossings Plan is showing us over 2,500-plus homes. Do we really need this concentration of infill in Tamoka Oaks? I'm sure the developers can design a new development in a way that adds value to the existing character of the area without overloading this piece of land. Secondly, of course, is the density is the cause of the traffic issue. Two neighborhoods will be directly affected by this project. I know the experts and calculations of traffic studies, which can only be figured out by rocket scientists, say this is not going to be an issue. But it's just common sense that 272 homes will add almost 600 cars on the roads in the Tamoka Oaks trail subdivisions plus the surrounding neighborhoods off Nova and Willmet, and add to the traffic to one of the busiest intersections in the city at Nova and Grenada. The developer keeps saying they can't make a profit with less density. But it's not the city's responsibility to make sure the developer makes the most profit. It's the city's responsibility to make the best decisions for the residents, the neighborhoods, the surrounding communities, and the city as a whole for now and in the future. This large-scale infill will affect traffic and lifestyle in our most central residential area. Please consider how this project will affect this area in years to come when making your decision. Thank you.
Thank you. Dick Reed, followed by Jim Cameron.
Thank you, gentlemen. I've lived in the area with my wife for 44 years. We live in the trails, 16 Stone Quarry Trail, and I'm a golfer. And I was in business for 37 years, which I sold in April of 2022. At 81, my wife said it was time to retire. So I don't know if it's a foregone conclusion, but maybe it is that this is already going to be developed into something other than a golf course. And my pitch would be, that's pretty silly from a city with a Chamber of Commerce, with the residents that we have, with the wealth that we have, when you see that Palm Coast has four public golf courses, Holly Hill has one, Daytona Beach has six, Port Orange has two, New Smyrna has three, with Riverbend closing, and that was my home course. That place was always busy. You've got those golfers. And you'd have golfers on Tamoka Oaks the same. I played Tamoka Oaks many times before it closed. It's a beautiful golf course. I think the city ought to purchase that land, or I like the idea of the trade with the Riverbend land, and then run it or lease it out with a pro, just like the city of Daytona Beach does. I think they even lose a little bit of money on it, but they don't lose a lot. And so I'd like to see it stay as a golf course. I don't know if that's going to be possible at this point. We maybe have gone too far, I'm a little, too little, too late. But hopefully the city could keep the prices down. We have one other golf course, Halifax Plantation, which is semi-private. I used to play Grand Haven when it was semi-private, and then it dropped its semi-private, became private. That could happen at Halifax Plantation. Then we would have no golf courses in Ormond Beach. And just from the population standpoint and the public relations standpoint, we ought to have a golf course for our local residents. That's my thought. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Jim Cameron, followed by Kristen Deaton.
Good evening. I'm Jim Cameron. And just wanted to say, this plan development, residential development site plan, has been updated numerous times based on input received by city staff, advisory board members, and residents. And in short, what we're saying is that the proposed PRD affords this group the opportunity to provide increased buffering, pedestrian connectivity, open space, and road improvements. And this group has revised the PRD site plan and reduced the plan from 317 units down to the current 272 single-family residential units. And I think they've, like I said, I only hope that this PRD site plan provides a project that balances the need for continued housing in Daytona Beach, I mean, Ormond Beach, while also protecting the nature and value of existing Tamoka Oaks neighborhood. And I also want to commend the work done by Steve Spraker and staff, and I support the project.
Thank you. Kristen Deaton. Kristen, when you're done, we're going to take a quick five-minute break.
Kristen Deaton, lifelong Ormond Beach resident. I have concerns, as I'm sure you do. While I'm a Breakaway Trails resident, both my parents and my sister reside in Tamoka Oaks, so I have a vested interest. As an experienced local residential mortgage lender, I can attest that an estate-style community with larger homes and larger lots is needed and would do well if a development has to go here. I think it is clear what the residents of this respected community of Tamoka Oaks are asking for, and I encourage you to take the recommendation of your planning board when it comes to this. If the developer, planning board, and residents cannot come to an agreement on the proposed number of homes, lot sizes, and further concerns, I think the answer is clear. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Kristen. Jim Rose, you'll be up when we come back. But Commission, with your permission, we'll take a five-minute break, five-minute recess.
No, I just wanted to...
I won't eat them at all, so I keep them.
Want me to bang something?
Nah, I'm just...
I'm not shy in there.
I was gonna give Jim, try to get Jim's attention, but I think he's ready.
Mr. Rose?
Jim, if you're ready, we're gonna reconvene the City Commission meeting.
I am ready.
Great. Give everybody, give everybody just a second to sit down and get situated, and we'll have you begin your three minutes. Yes, sir.
(laughing).
Commission, you ready?
Ready.
Yes.
Go ahead, Jim.
Thanks, thanks, Mayor. My name's Jim Rose, I live at 21 Eagle Court in Tomoka Oaks. I'm chairman of the Golf Course Committee for the Tomoka Oaks Homeowners Association. I've been involved in this process right now, this development, for almost three years, which is longer than it took me to go through law school. This has been a long, long process already, and I've learned a lot about how this works. It doesn't work like it does in trials and courts like I was used to. But what I want to do is I want to thank Steve Spraker and his staff for what they've done. Steve has been very professional, very transparent, and incredibly responsive. I would send Steve an email, and I would get an email back within minutes, so kudos to him. I also want to thank the Planning Board, just for their 11 hours of hearings that we had, and I was amazed by the degree of attention that they gave, all the people and the respect they gave people that came up and testified. And I want to thank the Commission. You know, we've met with all of you, and you've given an opportunity for the citizens of Tomoka Oaks to tell their fears and their concerns, and we appreciate that, too. And with that being said, for all the reasons that you've read about and for the 7-0 planned Planning Board decision, I would ask that you also deny the developer's request in this matter. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Kathy Navatney, followed by Jeff Boyle. Did Kathy stick around? All right. Jeff, you're up, followed by Darla Widnall.
Jeff Boyle, 614 North Halifax Drive. After 75 days of study, the Planning Board unanimously recommended denial of the proposed rezoning. Developer property rights must recognize existing property rights. Site plans must comply with land use codes and policies. Development must be compatible with adjacent homes. Neighborhood character must be protected. Property values, the environment, and natural open space must be preserved, and traffic must flow safely. The proposal before you fails each of these tests, contrary to claims of compliance in the development order. Most threatening is the creation of unsafe traffic for Tomoka Oaks, the trails, Escondido condos, Tomoka Oakwood North condos, and Taliqua. 2,774 additional vehicle trips a day through a bottleneck entrance to streets not designed for such heavy traffic volume, with only a single direct exit to Nova Road and only two main trail exits for traffic passing through the trails. Legal questions: cloud the land use rights. Tomoka Golf Course protected covenants were never legally released. A 2006 City Commission development order preserved the golf course in perpetuity as a condition for approval. Subsequently, federal courts have ruled that golf course communities are protected from conversions to residential housing even after the golf course has closed. This project tramples adjacent property rights. The site plan before you has inspired the most intense public opposition in our city's history. Tomoka Oaks and the trails must be preserved. This rezoning proposal must be denied. Thank you.
Thank you. Darla Widnall, and I'll try again on, after Darla, we'll have Kathy Navatney if she's back.
Darla Widnall, Seven Shawnee Trail. I'm a registered nurse, I've lived in the trails for 31 years. Sands Lassiter, the developer's traffic engineer, was asked by a Planning Board member a couple months' meetings ago if he had come up with an emergency evacuation plan. Mr. Lassiter answered, "I was not asked to do that." So we are left to our own devices to figure out an emergency evacuation plan. The map you have in front of you shows my rendition of how five total communities will be impacted by an emergency evacuation. The brown highlighting on the map shows the roads leading to Nova and Granada. The developers say they will make sure there are emergency exits from their proposed development. It doesn't matter. All roads lead to the trails if residents in the Tomoka Oaks area cannot get out on their 450-foot road called Tomoka Oaks Boulevard that goes to Nova. I believe Tomoka Oaks Boulevard will be jammed. Residents of Escondido condos only have one exit, and it will be going out onto this 450-foot road. If they are lucky enough to get out using their one and only driveway, they will most likely turn right and head toward the trails. The trails with their 990 homes will ultimately get the bulk of the traffic, as they also try to get to Nova and Granada. Will Meisner's Bridge on the main trail be able to handle the extra weight of traffic that will become stalled on the bridge at times? What will it be like if emergency vehicles need to come into our communities with all the cars evacuating, possibly construction vehicles, cars parked on the sides of the road? Is a turning radius around the island at the entrance to Tomoka Oaks appropriate for large emergency vehicles to get around? This dangerous situation during an emergency evacuation is a direct violation of Land Development Code Number Six in regards to desirable traffic flow in case of a fire or catastrophe. Thank you.
Thank you. Tyler Brown, followed by Paul Hughes.
Tyler Brown, 90 North St. Andrews Drive. In a statement to the New Journal, the developer claims that they have a lower density than surrounding neighborhood and the lowest proposed density of any neighborhood in that corridor of the city. What they didn't mention was their initial proposal of 300 units on that property down to 272 is a result of dropping 50, 60, and 70-foot lots. Those certainly aren't compatible with Tomoka Oaks. Why is the developer being rewarded for dropping something that should have never been proposed? The density of Tomoka Oaks, according to the developer, is 2.09 homes per acre. They get this by removing conservation space from behind River Bluff homes. This space is owned by those River Bluff owners, they pay taxes on it, and they can improve it. They can build docks, boardwalks down to the river that increase their use and the value of their property. If you believe the developer, on page 2,080 of your packet, if you include the conservation space, Tomoka Oaks would have a density of 1.26 homes per acre. Unfortunately, that's inaccurate. The developer overestimated the conservation space in Tomoka Oaks by over 88 acres, at least according to the Geographical Information System as supplied to me by Mr. Spraker. If you use the Geographic Information System for Tomoka Oaks, not counting the golf course, you have a Tomoka Oaks density of 1.53. If you add the golf course, which was Tomoka Oaks' original green space, you get a density of 1.11 units per acre. If you don't believe that the golf course and the conservation space should be included in the Tomoka Oaks density, for whatever reason, let's apply the same standards to Tomoka Reserve. Their 1.84 units per acre density very quickly becomes 3.04 to 3.39, depending on which theory you're using. Long and short, if you get to count land use designations, the surrounding communities don't get to use in their density calculation, it becomes easy to be less dense than your neighbors and less dense than every community in that corridor. I ask the Commission to use apples-to-apples comparisons when you're looking at density and deny this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Paul Hughes, followed by Paul and Deb Mayback.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you all for coming out and participating. I'm sure it's not pleasant, but it is part of our process. What I'd like to reflect upon is that this is a classic cart before the horse sort of thinking. We have many facts, like the EMS exits are negotiated after approval of this plan if it were approved, yet if you don't have those rear exits as depicted on the plan, then you cannot approve the plan. These exits and EMS ingress and egress is important. Most of you may not recall, but during the fires of 98, 99, the golf course was actually an approved evacuation route. And I know that because I've worked with the Guarded Reserve in flying all the airdrops for the water drops. So it is an important way in and out of Tomoka Oaks if there is fires back in there. So you're building more homes on an exit route for us, so it's another way of looking at it. The infrastructure has not been fully completed until the plan goes into place, yet you have to look at the grid size for the electrical concerns, the sewer, gray water, and the traffic circle, nevertheless getting out onto Nova Road. The traffic light at Nova Road is especially important because it's an evacuation route and a rather large and possible task right now, nevertheless when all the folks might show up. Then what if they go out the other way with Meisner Creek? And it's a wooden bridge, Escondido engineer on calculating the stress-strain relationship, and wood is wood, it's not predictable. It's something you overbuild with. However, we have a school that's leveled right now, and you're not seeing actual traffic because everyone is going an alternative route to take their children over to the beachside. So we're trying to put 20 pounds in a 5-pound sack. My grandfather told me that doesn't work. The developers want a profit, it's not a problem with it. I think it's actually a great thought to swap properties over at the airport. They, there's no talk about public housing or assisting the poor, they just want money? Can't fight them on that. We want quiet enjoyment, that is our choice. They want a private gated community inside of a public, open space. We cannot go and trespass legally and bring our cars in there at certain times. If you think about it, it just doesn't work. Look at Spruce Creek, which is built around a golf course and people that love to fly airplanes. There's examples here, and an hypocrisy with all this.
Thank you.
I close with only saying thank you very much to all the staff, especially Stephen Spraker, who's been very exact on his appraisals and information. Thank you.
Thank you, Paul. Paul and/or Deb Mayback?
Good evening.
Good evening.
I would also like to acknowledge Stephen Spraker as a very positive individual and very interested in providing an answer to somebody who needed a little help, which I did. I tried to send the Commission a copy of my email, I missed the dot between first and last names, nobody got it. Stephen was very helpful to me in that he said, the same day I sent my email, he returned his email to me, and he said, "I will handle getting the copy of your email into their packets." Thank you, Stephen. I don't know if anybody on the Commission has read or considered my email, I'm not going to go through all the detail. I'd like to just discuss three, three points. The first thing is the danger that exists already in Tomoka Oaks. The streets, as you all know, are very narrow, and they are without sidewalks. If you've ever seen people walking dogs or a senior couple, I consider myself very much a senior, and it's dangerous when you have a car parked on either side of any of the Tomoka Oaks streets. Two cars coming at each other, one has to stop to be safe if you're walking on the street. That is very unsafe for the elderly, for the kids, especially around the places where kids are picked up for school by the school buses. Not everyone adheres to the 25 mile an hour speed limit. Can't do anything about that because there's always the guy with the lead foot. But the streets can't be made wider, and the sidewalks are certainly not going to be put in. So what does that mean? It's extreme danger to everybody who lives there. My next-door neighbor gave away his bicycle. I said, "Why did you do that? You're not an old man." He says, "I don't want to get killed." So what he did for exercise is he walked around the neighborhood and not drove. The second item I'd like to bring to your attention is the removal of trees. I don't know if you appreciate the grandeur of a great big oak tree. I have one on my front lawn. Huge. I can't get around it, but that's going to be destroyed. All the big ones that are on the golf course aren't going to exist anymore. And that's what the place is, that's what it's labeled from.
Right.
Tomoka Oaks.
Oaks, we got it. Did you want Deb to speak, or was that everything?
I just wanted to be, my mistake.
Not at all, not at all. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate that. Rick Rickards, followed by Tom Fitzgibbon.
Good evening. I'm Rick Rickards, I live in Escondido Condominiums, and I'm opposed to the proposed residential development at the Tomoka Oaks Golf Course property for several reasons, all of which have already been discussed at great length. Instead, I want to focus my remarks on what I consider the biggest reason to be opposed to this development, and that's broken promises. If you believe the developer, on page 2,080 of your packet, if you include the conservation space, Tamoka Oaks would have a density of 1.26 homes per acre. Unfortunately, that's inaccurate. The developer overestimated the conservation space in Tamoka Oaks by over 88 acres, at least according to the geographical information system as supplied to me by Mr. Spraker. If you use the geographic information system for Tamoka Oaks, not counting the golf course, you have a Tamoka Oaks density of 1.53. If you add the golf course, which was Tamoka Oaks' original green space, you get a density of 1.11 units per acre. If you don't believe that the golf course and the conservation space should be included in the Tamoka Oaks density, for whatever reason, let's apply the same standards to Tamoka Reserve. Their 1.84 units per acre density very quickly becomes 3.04 to 3.39 depending on which theory you're using. Long and short, if you get to count land use designations, the surrounding communities don't get to use in their density calculation, it becomes easy to be less dense than your neighbors and less dense than every community in that corridor. I asked the commission to use apples-to-apples comparisons when you're looking at density and deny this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Paul Hughes, followed by Paul and Deb Mayback.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you all for coming out and participating. I'm sure it's not pleasant, but it is part of our process. What I like to reflect upon is that this is a classic cart before the horse sort of thinking. We have many facts, like the EMS exits have, are negotiated after approval of this plan if it were approved. Yet, if you don't have those rear exits as depicted on the plan, then you cannot approve the plan. These exits and EMS ingress and egress is important. Most of you may not recall, but during the fires of 98, 99, the golf course was actually an approved evacuation route. And I know that because I've worked with the Guarded Reserve in flying all the airdrops for the water drops. So it is an important way in and out of Tamoka Oaks if there is fires back in there. So you're building more homes on an exit route for us. So it's another way of looking at it. The infrastructure has not been fully completed until the plan goes into place. Yet, you have to look at the grid size for the electrical concerns, the sewer, gray water, and the traffic circle, nevertheless getting out onto Nova Road. The traffic light at Nova Road is especially important because it's an evacuation route and a rather large and possible task right now, nevertheless when all the folks might show up. Then what if we go out the other way with Meisner Creek? And it's a wooden bridge. It's getting engineer on calculating the stress-strain relationship. And wood is wood. It's not predictable. It's something you overbuild with. However, we have a school that's leveled right now and you're not seeing actual traffic because everyone is going an alternative route to take their children over to the beach side. So we're trying to put 20 pounds in a five-pound sack. My grandfather told me that doesn't work. The developers want a profit. It's not a problem with it. I think it's actually a great thought to swap properties over at the airport. They, there's no talk about public housing or assisting the poor. They just want money. You can't fight them on that. We want quiet enjoyment. That is our choice. They want a private gated community inside of a public, open space. We cannot go and trespass legally and bring our cars in there at certain times. If you think about it, it just doesn't work. Look at Spruce Creek, which is built around a golf course and people that love to fly airplanes. There's examples here and an hypocrisy with all this.
Thank you.
I close with only saying thank you very much to all the staff, especially Steven Spraker, who's been very exact on his appraisals and information. Thank you.
Thank you, Paul. Paul and/or Deb Mayback.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I would also like to acknowledge Steven Spraker as a very positive individual and very interested in providing an answer to somebody who needed a little help, which I did. I tried to send the commission a copy of my email. I missed the dot between first and last names, though nobody got it. Steven was very helpful to me in that he said, the same day I sent my email, he returned his email to me and he said, "I will handle getting the copy of your email into their packets." Thank you, Steven. I don't know if anybody on the commission has read or considered my email. I'm not going to go through all the detail. I'd like to just discuss three, three points. The first thing is the danger that exists already in Tamoka Oaks. The streets, as you all know, are very narrow and they are without sidewalks. If you've ever seen people walking dogs or a senior couple, I consider myself very much a senior, and it's dangerous when you have a car parked on either side of any of the Tamoka Oaks streets. Two cars coming at each other, one has to stop to be safe if you're walking around the street. That is very unsafe for the elderly, for the kids, especially around the places where kids are picked up for school by the school buses. Not everyone adheres to the 25 mile an hour speed limit. Can't do anything about that because there's always the guy with the lead foot. But the streets can't be made wider and the sidewalks are certainly not going to be put in. So what does that mean? It's extreme danger to everybody who lives there. My next-door neighbor gave away his bicycle. I said, "Why did you do that? You're not an old man." He says, "I don't want to get killed." So what he did for exercise is he walked around the neighborhood and not drove. The second item I'd like to bring to your attention is the removal of trees. I don't know if you appreciate the grandeur of a great big oak tree. I have one on my front lawn. Huge. I can't get around it. But that's going to be destroyed. All the big ones that are on the golf course aren't going to exist anymore.
Paul, did you want...
That's what it's labeled from. Tamoka Oaks is...
We got it. Did you want Deb to speak or was that everything?
No, I just wanted to be, my mistake.
Not at all. Not at all. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate that. Rick Rickards, followed by Tom Fitzgibbon.
Good evening. I'm Rick Rickards. I live in Escondido Condominiums. And I'm opposed to the proposed residential development at the Tamoka Oaks Golf Course property for several reasons, all of which have already been discussed at great length. Instead, I want to focus my remarks on what I consider the biggest reason to be opposed to this development, and that's broken promises. People who buy a house in a golf course community do so largely because the community is built around a golf course. This desirability is accentuated when home buyers are guaranteed that the property will remain a golf course or green space in perpetuity. That's a, there's a measure of status involved in a golf course home, but more importantly, buyers have the assurance that the community will be forever free of additional development, that the topography will always look the way it looked when they fell in love with that property and purchased it. That's what Tamoka Oaks buyers were guaranteed. I don't know exactly what kind of legal gyrations took place that altered what should have been this unalterable promise, but apparently that's what happened at some point in the past. That was unethical and immoral. I'm sure that nobody on this commission had anything to do with breaking that promise to the residents of Tamoka Oaks. But I'd encourage you to avoid the temptation to throw up your hands and say, "We didn't break the promise. Our hands are tied." Regardless of who broke that promise, you have the power to make this situation right. You have the power to preserve this unique property from profiteering. You have the power to stand up and do the right thing. There are hundreds of people who are opposed to this development because of the negative impact it will have on our quality of life. That's hundreds of people opposed and one developer in favor. Please remember who you're here to serve. We're depending on you. So make us proud. Do the right thing.
Tom Fitzgibbon, followed by Denise Corley.
All right. Orman Beach Commissioners and Mayor Partington. My name is Tom Fitzgibbon. I live in Tamoka Oaks. And I just want to say to everyone here, thank you very much for listening to us. And this is a little bit different from the place I've spent a lot of time in New York City, where we are not quite so civil to each other. We purchased our house at a premium because of the golf course views. I have talked with several, several real estate professionals, none of whom think that my property value goes up if I suddenly see houses behind my house. The Orman Beach Site Planning Review Committee and Independent Traffic Engineer reviewed the developer's traffic plan and were not satisfied. I don't think we are either. I really do applaud the Orman Beach's careful examination and analysis of the developer's plan. I walk, bicycle, and drive on my street, South St. Andrews. I see cars, trucks, and even semi-truck trailers speeding past my house, much faster than the posted 25 miles per hour. Every day I see runners, people out for a walk, mothers pushing baby carriages, and kids on bicycles risking life and limb in our street that has no sidewalks. No sidewalks. We share the street with traffic. Construction trucks, utility trucks, lawnmowers are parked in the streets at all times, making it difficult for drivers to see pedestrians. A woman walker was struck by a car and killed around a blind curve several houses down from ours. The Orman Beach Utilities Department has recommended speed tables for Tamoka Oaks. They know we already have problems. If this development plan is allowed to proceed, more children and adults living in Tamoka Oaks, the trails and Escondido will be injured or killed. This is purely a safety issue that you can remedy. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Denise Corley, followed by Michelle Zirkelbach.
My name is Denise Corley. My husband and I own a home on South St. Andrews on the golf course. Tom and I have lived in cities for 40 years. We wanted a quiet place with nature to enjoy. We've only lived in our home for three years, but it was the trees on the golf course that we fell in love with. Now they are threatened. I believe Carolyn Davis's research questioning the legality of building on the golf course has merit. There are a myriad of issues my fellow citizen neighbors have been talking about with their three minutes. Commissioners, this is the wrong plan, the wrong place. It, that's, that's simple. Vote no despite the threats. Any environmental disaster, stop it before it's too late. We keep sweeping the dirt under the rug. I'm speaking about the toxic, cancer-causing toxins that are lying in the soil below the golf course. The environmental report lays out the steps required for the soil remediation that are like a science project. I have great doubts that this aspect of the development will be seriously overseen or complied with, especially considering the demolition of the buildings on the golf course that was done before submitting any soil samples to the Florida Department of Environmental Protection. As, as this is going to be a phased-in plan, the public will lose interest in overseeing the extensive procedure. Does the city staff have to stand guard, making sure the soil is remediated properly? We are looking at carcinogens being released into the air for years, five years. Or, as the report suggests, piled, pile the toxic soil on open space, probably in the berm of the stormwater pits that are planned for behind our homes. City officials are wary, city officials were wary of the 206 PDR. At that time, it seemed too dense. What is being proposed now is a monster in comparison. Developing the golf course into 272 homes will destroy our quality of life. Many of our elderly residents will not get the serenity and the investment in Tamoka Oaks and the golf course offered. In the words of Walter Boardman, "Don't fight it, buy it." Thank you.
Thank you. Zirkelbach, followed by Caitlin Casey Parker.
Good evening. My name is Michelle Zirkelbach. I'm at 320 River Bluff Drive in Tamoka Oaks. According to the survey that Bill and I obtained when we were closing on our dream home in Tamoka Oaks, which happens to be on a street that's highly desirable, where people pay a premium to back up to the river, we obtained a survey. The survey indicated we had approximately three acres of land, and that was corroborated by Volusia County Property Appraisers records, that officially shows we own nine, pardon me, 2.97 acres. Of that land, I'll admit to you, 2.67 acres of it is labeled separately and taxed at a lower rate. But make no mistake, we own that land. On a page that I hope was provided to you, I took a snippet of page 2,080 in your packet. I labeled it A. And then I took a snippet of the Volusia County Property Appraiser map record and labeled it B. I hope that you will notice that our lot is indicated by a red X. I also hope that you will note that our parcel was magically reduced. What happened to the rest of our property? I can only imagine in my mind that this is one of the applicant's attempts to manipulate the density calculation. How can they state in their graphic presented to the public that my property is open space slash conservation? Conservation implies to most people that that land is under the supervision or owned by another party attempting to preserve it. It's almost, almost as if they want everyone to think that that area is not in our control. But it can be used by us. There are several people on River Bluff that have docks that go out to the river. And maybe that's a choice that we'll make in the future to enhance our lives or to increase the value of our home. I encourage you to please ask the hard questions about density and vet the answers presented by all of their experts with experts of your own. If in fact, the applicant moves forward with their R2 application, it is going to be of extreme importance to ensure compliance with compatibility of the surrounding area. As a neighborhood community, we have acted in good faith by attending multiple meetings in which the applicants pretend to listen, but apparently have not really heard our concerns. Their ultimate step at this point was to rewrite the plat map. I firmly believe that when Mr. Rubin first drove up from South Florida, he never foresaw the battle that we would wage with limited donations and thousands, tens of thousands of hours of our personal time. I'm pretty sure Mr. Rubin expected this to be similar to some other projects where his team can win the day by placating the masses with meaningless four-house concessions. Mr. Rubin, I have news for you. We are not those people and this is not your day.
Thank you. Caitlin Casey Parker, followed by Robert Banker.
Good evening. I'm Caitlin Parker. I live at 32 Pebble Beach Drive in Tamoka Oaks. I was born and raised in Tamoka Oaks. And this terrifies me of shoehorning this giant development into this small space. I fear for the wildlife that's moved into this area and I know for a fact that there are gopher tortoises all over the property. I've seen them. I fear of the traffic. It is definitely a problem. I have no idea how they think that it is not going to affect our daily lives. When Tamoka Elementary School is back in session and the school buses are running through the neighborhood, it's insane. So much traffic and the cars piled up waiting to pick up the kids. But that's just the traffic. There's the wildlife. There's the environment and our quality of life. This will definitely affect our quality of life. I understand that the developer's right to make a profit. But this developer is not from Orman Beach. We are. And we have an amazing city and we need to preserve that for our future. And I do hope you take that into consideration and please vote no. Thank you.
Thank you. Robert Banker, followed by Jessica Vitale.
Good evening. Robert Banker, Escondido. Thank you for this time. I don't believe it is in the best interest of this community for these developers to come in here and try to fit a square peg into the proverbial round hole. As stated in numerous pre, past meetings, mention has been made that previous townfathers wanted this area to be a golf course or at least a green area. Definitely not an overpopulated, undervalued housing slum. I say housing slum. That may be a little harsh. It may not be. I venture to say that 100% of the residents that purchase property adjacent to or adjoining the golf course did so with the expectation of continued gorgeous view out their backyard and a nice view at a golf course. Their expectation was definitely not to be looking out the back of their window at a 10-foot privacy fence. I say a slum area because those sardine homes that are going to be jammed into the interior of this project will at best be impossible to sell for any planned dollar amount that these developers propose today. No one wants to live eight feet from his neighbor. If they did, they probably would buy a condo. And condo living is not quite the same as living in a nice home and comfortable yard. And if you can't sell these little sardine homes, then the price is quite naturally is going to drop. And thus, the value of the said property drops and thus, all surrounding property values suffer the same devaluing fate. Two meetings ago, these same developers said when questioned, "Why not build fewer homes at a higher cost?" Their answer was, "We can't sell them." Last meeting, these same developers quoted prices they could build homes at $600,000 to $1 million. Which is it? They can build them or they can't. They can sell them or they can't. Why the double talk? Again, one act, one entrance, one exit. No one in his right mind can possibly think that this is a good idea. How do emergency vehicles operate? I sure hope that this is not your home that these emergency vehicles have to get to. I hope it's not your mother, your father, your kid, your grandkids that the emergency, the ambulance has to get to and can't. Or the fire truck has to get you to a home and they can't. What about all the pedestrian traffic? Many people have mentioned this idea. Anyone concerned about safety? Sure, we're concerned about safety. That's always the answer. That's the standard answer. Oh, we've given it plenty of thoughts. But no, it always takes, according to human nature, someone must get killed before somebody says, "Gosh, we should have probably said no to this development project long, long ago when we had the chance." And now we have people getting hurt, injured, or killed all because we were afraid to say no to the developers.
Thank you, Robert.
Planning board was seven to nothing. Thank you.
Thank you. Jessica, followed by Barbara Dolliner.
Good evening. My name is Jessica Vitale and I live at 7 Eagle Drive in Tamoka Oaks. And while we don't live on the golf course, my husband and I purchased our property in Tamoka Oaks in late December 2020. One of the huge selling points to us was the golf course. My husband plays golf and we thought that buying in a community with a course would be great for our property value, resale if we ever decided to move, et cetera. At that point, the course was not yet sold and we had no idea of its impending doom to be sold and developed into a separate community. When we heard the news about its sale to be turned into a residential development, all I could think of was, who would want to buy a house in a neighborhood that exists inside another neighborhood? Many people moved to Tamoka Oaks because of the allure of the golf style, golf lifestyle. And I believe that most of my fellow neighbors would like to keep that nostalgia alive. Besides the issues of small overcrowded lot sizes, additional traffic, five-plus years of construction noise, possible flooding downhill from the development, destruction of green space and natural habitat, and inadequate plan for the proposed buffer space, the raising of our property taxes for additional city utility services, and much, much more. It in fact, may not even be legal to remove the golf course and fill the land with residential homes because of a possible pre-existing title restriction. There are currently homeowners that reside on the golf course that bought their homes with the understanding that the golf course would be in place for at least 99 years. To bring up to the current plan, I find it very insulting and threatening that the developer current backup plan is only to rezone to R2 if the city council rejects the most recent PDR plan. That plan, which I believe is an extremely pathetic revision of only five less units in total from the previous submitted plan. Yet, the developer stated only yesterday morning to one of the local newspapers that they have adopted and acted upon the constructive input provided by the community in the hopes of finding the best result. I ask, how is removing only five lots showing our community and city any good faith that the developers are really, truly working with us to find the best result? I ask you, city council, to please vote to deny residential development in the heart of our beautiful and resilient community. Let's keep our green space naturally green and not green with greed.
Thank you. Barbara Dolliner, followed by Missy Herrera.
Hi, everybody. I'd like you to just take a minute and I would like you to breathe. This has been a most int- This has been a most interesting experience for me. I've never seen bullies wearing suits and ties. I love it. They're trying to tell us what to do. Tonight, ladies and gentlemen, and Mr. Mayor, you have one of the most important decisions to make in Ormond Beach. It's one of the council's most important decisions since you exist, I believe. Tonight, you have the ability to either keep Temoca Oaks the community and jewel that it is, or succumb to a developer's bullying tactics. You have the ability to tell the developer, his plan just doesn't fit. No matter how many different ways this guy has packaged his product, shaving off, excuse me, five homes, thank you very much, it does not fit Temoca Oaks. Why? Why can't he understand a simple concept, not more than 150 homes, not less than 100 feet, and all executive homes to match Temoca Oaks? The planning board said no. It was a resounding no. The planning commission said no. It was a resounding no. And now, my dear neighbors and elected officials, it's all up to you. This is going to be on your conscience now, how you're going to vote. Are you going to succumb to a bully in a tie, in a suit, who makes believe he's friends with everybody? Or are you going to think about your neighbors that you see at Publix, at church, at the cleaners, at your fundraisers? What are you going to do? Vote with your conscience tonight, and I'm asking you, please, to vote no. Thank you to all, and I especially want to thank, yes, Stephen 100%, but all of the neighbors who have donated all of their time and energy and including money. They've done a tremendous job, and I'm very impressed with my neighborhood.
Missy Herrera, followed by Tyler Travis.
Hi, my name's Missy Herrera. I live at 111 North St. Andrews Drive. Thank you for your time and thoughtful consideration of this project before you tonight. As you know, the residents of Temoca Oaks, along with our attorney, have been meeting with the developer team for over the past two years. You've heard and read a lot of information from their team, and the facts just don't add up. You've heard about the density calculations, the traffic studies, the lot sizes, and the lack of compatibility. The attitude of their team from day one, in my opinion, has been grounded in their right to develop the golf course property. The existing homeowners have rights to, rights to safely exercise or walk our pets in our neighborhood, right to safely get in and out of our neighborhood to work, school, and life events, right to safely exit our neighborhood in the event of a fire or damage of hurricane at the Nova exit, which has happened in the time that I've lived there in the past 30 years. We take for granted certain innate rights as residents in this community. One of those is being an expectation to receive medical care when we or our family members need them. I shared with the planning board my concern that our infrastructure is not keeping up with our current rate of development. As Mrs. Riles shared with you, their experience of the beds lining the hallway of the ER is a regular occurrence. This is no fault of the hospital or the staff, as they're working overtime. I work for a medical device company, and I support our physicians and nurses during surgical procedures at all of the hospitals in Volusia County. Our health system is stretched thin. It's a regular occurrence for the hospital to be on code black, which means there are no beds. When there are no beds, you are not seen by a doctor. I don't care who you are or what your connections are. Unfortunately, when both my parents became ill with COVID in February of this year, the hospital was on code black. I waited with my 87-year-old father for eight hours, not in the waiting room because it was full, but in an overflow hallway. We left after midnight because there were no beds. If there are no beds, you can't be seen by a doctor. After two more trips to the ER and a third day in attendance, my father was, we made arrangements for my father to come home with hospice. We didn't have a hospice nurse for almost five days because they are stretched thin as well. My dad passed away a few days later, and I always wonder if we could have done better for him. He was a good man, and he deserved better. This development, along with other pending developments, we have coming down the pike, will alter the rights and the way of life we cherish and depend upon in Ormond Beach. Thank you.
Tyler Travis, and we'll try one last time, followed by Kathy Navatney, if she's still here or back.
Yes, thank you. I'm a newer resident in Ormond Beach, although I live outside Temoca Oaks. I live in Zone 4. I guess I just wanted to speak to the comments about the city purchasing the golf course or using the Riverbend Golf Course to, I guess, move the development. I am, I guess, generally in favor of new developments in Ormond Beach, although I do respect the residents and their views on keeping the golf course the way it is. My view is that this is an issue that the residents should solve themselves, that if they want to offer the Riverbend property as an alternative to the developers, then they should organize the purchase of that themselves, and that it shouldn't fall on the entire taxpayers of Ormond Beach. I also don't understand why, if the residents see this golf course as so important, see it as a viable business, that they didn't purchase it themselves a few years ago for the price that the developers bought it for. Maybe there was something going on there that made it unable for them to buy it. But I think we'd all agree that 150 acres in the middle of Ormond Beach is a priceless piece of property, and so it was purchased, I think, the Article 6, for $2.6 million. Again, I don't understand why the HOA didn't organize a purchase of that land themselves and maintain it themselves, but thank you.
Thank you, Tyler. Kathy Navatney. Commission, that's all the cards I have. I think we are now on rebuttal, and Attorney Baer, I think, if you want to start, and then we'll go to Mr. Merrill.
Good evening, one more time, I'll be brief. I think at the beginning, Mr. Merrill said that they were looking for guidance from the commission. Heard the same thing at the planning board. Planning board made pretty extensive findings. Increase the density, increase the lot size, increase the diversity of housing. Look at the 2006 PRD that was approved as an example of what would be appropriate development for this property. So I think it's been loud and clear, the density remains too high, the buffer needs additional safeguards in order to make sure it's still a buffer 10, 15, 20 years from now. And then again, the traffic remains a major concern. So I think you've heard sufficient information, evidence tonight to uphold the planning board's decision. It's time for this project, with all due respect, to go back to the drawing board to address these significant issues that remain. Nobody's saying that it can't be developed, it just can't be developed, the current densities that are being proposed. And don't fall for the scare tactics of R2, because I think legally, it's a defensible position that this property, due to its unique location, due to the prior history, the prior entitlements, that R2 is not automatic, PRD is something that could occur. So again, you've got a seven to nothing, planning board recommendation of denial, and there's been no competent substantial evidence submitted to you tonight, at least that's my argument, that would justify overturning unanimous planning board decision. Thank you.
Thank you. Rob Merrill.
I'll also be brief. Thanks, Denny. I think what Denny just said, I think what the neighbors have said, we all appreciate. I will say to you that I listened to every bit of it, and I took notes on all of it. I think that we have either responded, or we've said that we can't respond to the things that have been said. If you guys have any questions about any of those things, we've got lots of folks that are equipped to try to answer your questions. My focus tonight, much like what Denny was saying, is to hear from you guys. We are at a place now where a decision can be made based on what you guys want. We've heard over and over again what Temoca Oaks residents and the association want, what the planning board wants, what the staff wants, and we've given a lot. And I hear a lot of criticism that they don't think so, whether it was how many lots or the change in the configuration of the project, you know, change in the buffer, adding protections that they wanted. We've done, I think, a lot of it. But that's for you guys to judge. So if you want more, now's the opportunity, because this is a negotiated zoning. You guys know that. We've done PRDs, we've done PDs in Ormond Beach before, and we do them all over the place. It's a great tool for you guys to be able to say, if you're going to develop housing on this property, this is what we want it to look like. And, you know, I'm agreeing with Denny. So those things the planning board said, if you guys want to say those same things or some variety of them, we'll be able to respond to that, I think. This is the opportunity to have that exchange. So I'll say this, from a procedural standpoint, and Randy, I guess you can correct me if I'm wrong, if you guys say this is the end of the conversation from our end, then I don't think we're going to get a chance to get to that, at least not tonight. But I think it's important. I think you guys have an opportunity here, because it's going to go somewhere. You know that we're going to end up going somewhere to get a development plan of some sort approved, because of the fact that, as Denny mentioned several times, you know, he used the term R2 10 or 12 times since he's been up here, and I'm not supposed to talk about it, Randy, I know, but you know that we have a pending R2 application. We're looking for the backup plan. I think it's appropriate. These guys have invested this money and want to build something, and they want to do it responsibly. That's for you guys to tell us what you think is the right way to do it, and this is the time. So I'd like for us to have the opportunity, if you have comments or questions or concerns for us in terms of how this custom zoning should look, to have the opportunity to have conversation with you continued tonight. That's really, I guess, a question for Randy.
Thank you. Anything else as far as rebuttal? Randy, if not, I was going to go to questions with the commission, if they have any of the applicant or staff or the intervenor.
Yes. After your questions of staff and applicant and whomever, before you go into your deliberations, I'll be happy to do like a post summary for you. I think what you should focus in on, what you should not focus in on, and then I can help provide some options for you to consider as part of your decision-making process.
Thank you.
So just let me know when you want me to do that.
I'll do that. After we, commission, each ask our questions, then we'll have an opportunity to do disclosures, and then we'll go to City Attorney Randy Hayes to do exactly what he just said. Commission, what I'd like to do, with your permission, we'll start with Deputy Mayor Bryley and just go down the line with questions, and then when we ultimately do get to discussion, because this area is in, I believe, Zone 3, is that correct? Start with Commissioner Persis for discussion, if that's agreeable to everyone?
Sure.
Okay. So Deputy Mayor Bryley, you're recognized for questions, and then we'll just go on down the line.
Okay, Commissioner, I'm sorry, and some of my questions may lead to discussion, if that's okay?
I would, yeah, I mean, I think, ask all the questions that you have. Everybody's going to ask all the questions that they have. I'd like to keep discussion and discussion, if that's possible.
Yeah, yeah. So, and you can stop me if I get off course, or Randy, you as well. I guess the first question I have is, and Rob, I'm sorry, it's not for you. First of all, I do want to say, I want to thank everyone for coming out this evening. Your voices have been heard, and, you know, it makes, at least it makes me proud, I'm sure it makes this commission proud. Steven Spraker, we've heard nothing but glory remarks about you tonight, not only from the residents but the applicant, I think everybody involved, they sing your praises, and we're certainly proud that you are our planning director, sir, so thank you on that. And unfortunately, my first question's for you. So if you help me out with this, the golf course was part of the original Temoca Oaks And basically, what's kind of being proposed now is a subdivision within a subdivision, because it's not part of Temoca Oaks, even though it kind of is, because they have to utilize the same roadway to get in and out of the subdivision. If we consider something like this today as like a new subdivision or something like that, would that be considered like a replat of an existing subdivision or an amended plat for a subdivision?
So, again, Steven Spraker, planning director, my recollection is, the golf course was platted as its own separate parcel, so it wasn't part of the original subdivision. So you could say it's a replat, I think, of the 1961 plat. The planning board, I think, you know, emphasized, basically, you heard the Donut reference, but basically, you have a subdivision in a subdivision which has generated, you know, the concern and I think the comments that you've heard tonight.
Right. I think, and I think the expectation has always kind of been that the golf course was just kind of always part of the Temoca Oaks subdivision. So I think that's where, you know, but to me, I see this as a new subdivision inside an existing subdivision. So I think we probably all agree on that. If this were a new subdivision today, and I'm talking about all of Temoca Oaks and the proposed Temoca Reserve, would we allow, or would we approve, or would city staff recommend approval of a subdivision of, say, if you go with 272 and 547, you're probably a little over, what, 800 homes, something like that? A subdivision of 800 homes with only one ingress egress?
So there would need to be multiple access points. The proposed plan that you have does have an emergency access identified, still needs to be, you know, vetted through a construction process, and still needs to be reviewed by a site plan review committee, but there would be, you know, multiple access points in a new subdivision development.
Now, the multiple access points would be, as far as I can evacuation route, it would be Temoca Oaks Boulevard and what, Trails and Nova, or Main Trail and Nova and Main Trail and 40?
Right, so other subdivisions, if you think, for example, Pineland, they have emergency access through Ormond Green that are stabilized paths. So, you know, we've accepted other subdivisions with that type of setup, so that is not unusual given the number of lots being proposed. If it were a brand-new 800 lot subdivision, then that would have a different review criteria that would go through that process.
Which kind of leads me to my next question. I know it'd be kind of far out there thinking, but we know that the neighboring subdivision, Temoca Oaks, excuse me, the Trails, has a pretty strong HOA. I mean, it's a mandatory HOA, so on, so forth. If for some reason in the future they decided they didn't want the excess traffic from Temoca Oaks, is it possible they could gate the Trails subdivision? And in doing so, would it only allow one ingress egress into Temoca Oaks and Temoca Reserve?
Right, so that's a great question. So that would need to go through a site plan process, there would need to be amendments to the plat, homeowners in the Trails would need to agree to that, so it's an interesting question. Without some additional, you know, review, analysis, submittal, I can't give you, I mean, we've had a couple subdivisions try to go from public to private. I don't recall any offhand that have been successful. It's a complicated process.
But it's a possible process. I'm kind of like just looking at worst-case type scenario.
Yep. It is a possible process.
So I know Mr. Merrill, I think, did speak about the traffic signal at Temoca Oaks Boulevard and Nova Road. What is the distance, do we know, and maybe it may not be a question for you, it may be a question for Mr. Last or someone, the distance from the driveway of the Escondidos to the intersection of Temoca Oaks Boulevard and Nova Road?
So I would refer to the traffic.
I guess it would be the distance from Nova Road to the Escondidos driveway. I know it's not very far, it's not very long.
Good evening, commission. Sands Lassiter, president of LTG. Our address is 1450 West Granada Boulevard, Suite C2. Our address is 1450 West Granada Boulevard, Suite C2. As far as the distance, what we did is we actually did a queuing analysis from a traffic signal. We had to assume a traffic signal because at the intersection of Timoca Oaks and Nova Road, because we did a traffic signal warrant study, which showed that a traffic signal would meet the warrants. It barely met the warrants, but it met the warrants. And so we informed our client of that and said this would obviously be an expense we'd have to pay for. What we also did was measure the queue back from the stop line as a two-lane. So we would propose to re-mark that exit area. It's plenty wide enough for two lanes. Actually, people line up in two lanes today for lefts and right turns. And it did not back up. When we did the analysis and the simulation, and remember, we put a significantly higher percentage of our traffic going out that intersection rather than out Main Trail. And we showed that clearly there was enough distance to accommodate the queue at a stop condition under a red signal. So we proved up that that definitely met that. We handed that in, and it's actually part of the record.
Because my concern is still, with the added traffic coming out of Timoca Reserve and the traffic you already have coming out of Timoca Oaks to that signal, traffic or cars trying to exit the Escondidos are going to have a hard time getting out there and turning left because it's going to be stacked either, or left or right. Now, the only other option they might have would be to turn right out of the Escondidos, go up to the traffic signal, and then have to come back to the intersection.
Actually, that's a possibility. And that happens a lot where you have DOT with access management. That happens a lot. They use roundabouts or diamonds or whatever to do alternate routes to get back to an intersection. So that does happen. But we showed that the queue would not back past their entrance. We're not saying that they might not have to wait a cycle to get out. That could happen in the peak times.
Sure.
Only be during peak times, but that could happen.
Here's a question for you. I don't know, again, it's kind of, you look at these scenarios and you're kind of like, you know, every once in a while, we know that that traffic signal there at Nova Road will be fairly close to the railroad tracks there on Nova. And the traffic can get backed up from the trains. So obviously, it would probably be backed up to the traffic signal or close to it. My thought is, my question is, what are your thoughts on traffic trying to get out of Timoca Oaks and getting up to that intersection? And it's only, you know, that, I don't know how far back you are to, was San Andreas Street from Nova Road. Traffic wanting to turn right could possibly be backed up from the intersection there at Nova Road and decide, hey, you know what? I think I'm just going to take a right through Timoca Oaks, get out to reopen R and just avoid all this traffic mess because I actually want to go south on Nova instead of north. You think that's a good, you think that's a possibility?
Anything is possible. I'll admit that that is a way roundabout route to get back to South Nova Road. So I would say, could that happen? Absolutely, that could happen. Will it happen? I would say, most of the time, that will not happen. But does that mean that when, and you asked about a railroad queuing. This signal would have preemption on it, which would mean that southbound traffic would not be stopped in the event that there was a railroad activation of the railroad. It could be under railroad preemption. So we always check on that. If it's within the certain distance and we're concerned about the queue at all, we put in railroad preemption.
How long do you think you could make those stacking lanes there for left and right out of Timoca Oaks Boulevard?
We had to make sure that the queuing that we expect to occur, and that's with existing traffic plus a very significant percentage of Timoca Reserve traffic, would not back up past Escondido. And that's what we proved up, and that analysis did show that. And that analysis, by the way, I've had a lot of people say, your analysis, we just don't believe your analysis. It should be noted that the city's own traffic consulting engineer, an independent firm hired by the city to analyze our report, reviewed it. We addressed all of their questions. They had no further questions about our analysis and did not find it in that it was wrong. They did ask questions, we had to clarify some things. We were asked, did we do the counts during COVID? Part of the counts were done during COVID, so we redid the analysis. So we have not tried to avoid any responsibility. We tried to address all questions.
Some of my concerns are, as well, some of the traffic, okay, say, so say the folks that currently live in Timoca Oaks decide they don't want to use this intersection to get out because of the increased traffic from, say, Timoca Reserve. So they do use the other entrances or ways out of Timoca Oaks. They drive through the Trails to Main Trail and 40 and Main Trail and Nova. I don't believe, it's just my opinion, I don't believe those intersections can handle the capacity, they can't handle the volume of the traffic coming out of there. Because look at the stacking on, you don't have any stacking, per se, at Nova Road and Main Trail, and it's almost the same at Main Trail and 40. So unless you go on there and start to reconfigure those intersections, you know, you're putting a lot more volume on those roadways, plus the roadways through the Trails, basically are single-lane roadways. It's two lanes, but I mean, it's separated by a median. So I don't think those roads were ever, kind of, there was never any vision of them seeing that type of volume.
Actually, we've analyzed all the developments at the same time, and we showed there is capacity to handle it. And in fact, we could have pushed more traffic to Main Trail and not warranted a traffic signal at Nova Road and Timoca Oaks Boulevard. However, that's not what our distribution analysis showed us. It showed us the amount of traffic that we actually used in the report would head to Nova Road because our entrance is right next to Nova Road. And that did.
I will agree, I will agree that holds, it may hold true for your subdivision.
Yes.
But for the existing subdivision, if it gets congested, they're not going that way. They know other ways out of there. And they're going to go through the Trails, they're going to go through Timoca Oaks. That's just, I think that's how, the reality is, that's how it's going to play out. And now my next concern would be, we know there's a lot of, currently, there have been, I think some residents pointed out, vehicular and pedestrian conflicts within the Trails and Timoca Oaks, and that's no fault of your groups. I mean, those subdivisions were built back in the day when the code didn't require sidewalks in subdivisions, okay? You shouldn't be expected to build those sidewalks, and the city can't afford to build those sidewalks. But I just don't like the idea that we could be exacerbating a traffic situation through these streets without pedestrian facilities. And I just don't, and that's just something that really can't be.
And we have directly addressed that. We have addressed that by providing good pedestrian access via our access.
Well, for Timoca Oaks Boulevard, but not through the rest of the subdivision.
That's correct. Most of our traffic will head through to the east to Nova Road because that's where our access point is. So we have tried to address that, even off our site. So we agree that that is a concern. And I've taken my own kids trick-or-treating, et cetera, through Timoca Oaks and the Trails. So I understand what you're saying. And we will be providing those sidewalks internal to this project as well as external out to Nova Road.
Mr. Mayor, just two more, if I can?
Sure.
Okay. And this may be more for, this may be more for, it could be you, Sands, or it could be maybe Sean Finley. Number one, do we know what the weight capacity is for the Myers Branch Bridge and the Trails?
I don't know, sir. I know, that's probably something Sean could answer.
It's 26 tons for a two-axle vehicle. It's 28 tons for a three-axle vehicle. It's 38 tons for a four-axle vehicle. Now, I don't know if those calculations were done prior to the asphalt cap on a wooden bridge, which obviously applied more weight to the bridge. But I kind of crawled down in those woods yesterday and wanted to see what was down under that bridge. And the piers of that bridge are in water. So we know what happens when wood meets water. There is probably some sort of deterioration. And Sean, you can answer this question because I don't know. First of all, I guess, does the city of Ormond Beach inspect that bridge? Is that a state, is that a state thing, a county thing, or a city thing? Someone, I'm sure, inspects the bridge on occasion. And then who, whose jurisdiction, I guess, does the bridge fall under? Because I guess it's a city, you know, it's a public road. I guess it'd be the city's responsibility for the bridge.
Answer the first question. The Florida Department of Transportation inspects that bridge.
Okay.
I believe it's on an annual basis.
Okay.
The second question, that is the sole bridge that the city of Ormond Beach maintains. So it is under our maintenance.
Okay. So I guess my just, my question is, and it was brought up earlier, it was something that crossed my mind, is that if we add another 272 homes and people, and here's one thing that is quite possible. People that have children that want to take them to Timoca Elementary School may go through the Trails. And once they get to that intersection at Main Trail and 40, because you can just right across, you're going to have some pretty good backups along Main Trail, along, all the way back possibly to the bridge. And if you have cars stopped on that bridge, that's a lot of weight. When you're talking about, you know, a 26-ton truck running across the bridge, well, he's constantly moving. He's not stopped. And when you start putting multiple cars in that bridge with all that weight, I just don't know, I'm the lay guy, I don't know how it holds up. I don't know what the weight capacity is with a bunch of cars on that bridge not moving. But it is a concern. And that's pretty much, Mr. Mayor, you know, with the reconfiguration or the configuration of the current configurations of the intersections at Nova and Main Trail and 40 and Main Trail. I don't believe there's enough, those roads were not designed to handle the capacity of the potential traffic we're talking about increasing with this. So those are my thoughts, Mr. Mayor, and I may have comments later. Thank you.
Thank you, deputy mayor. Commissioner Persis, questions?
Thank you, mayor. Yes, I have a question that sort of piggybacks on deputy mayor Bryley's questions. What were the times of the traffic studies done? I don't mean the time of the year, but the time of the days. Mr. Lassiter, I think you can probably answer that.
Yes. Before we ever start a traffic study, we always negotiate a methodology with the agency. And in this case, we did do that. And we, our studies period was a typical morning and afternoon peak hours of the adjacent roadways, which is typically what we study.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Yes, ma'am.
Well, the last couple of days, I will tell on myself that I've taken some trips to Timoca Oaks and to the development during peak hours. In the morning, in the evening, when people are coming home or going out for dinner. And it's, right now, it's bad. It was backed up going out to Nova Road. It was backed up going out on Granada in the morning and in the evening. And just very difficult to get out. So that is a huge concern of mine, is the traffic issue in this development. The other thing, I did want to ask the developer just a question. And I just want to ask, are you, are you willing to significantly reduce the number of homes in this development and increase the lot sizes and irrigate the buffers?
Significant?
Yes.
What does that mean?
Significant.
I'm a lawyer, I need a number.
Maybe cut it at least in half, 100, let's say 100. And then in 2006, it was 122. In 2006, it was 122. I believe the commissioner at that time agreed on 122.
Yeah, so we had a condo proposal at, I think, 128 that was approved. And the idea seemed, I got like a good idea, got approved. You see where it went. So I think the answer to the question, if it's that number, it doesn't work. But I'd rather have one of you guys come up, if you don't mind. Whoever's not bashful, come up and give us an answer because I can't see well enough to see what you're saying. Sorry.
And I just, I just want to add that I think this, the development in 2006 didn't go because of the, you know, the bottom fell out. I mean, the money issue was not good, and there was just no money for it.
The answer from ownership on that kind of number, Commissioner, is we can't do it. It doesn't work.
It doesn't work in what way?
Okay, the business minds will have to come back up and explain to the commissioner why it doesn't work, if you don't mind, somebody. Thank you.
Okay.
I'm just not the expert, so I can't do that.
Thank you.
Obviously, we're here and people talk about profit and whatnot. We obviously want to make a profit. When you get into where you have to spend $800,000 on putting the light out there, you do have to do the cleanup. And you have so much, it would be like fixed cost in developing it. Not only do you have the cost of the land, the cost of all of what we've done for the last three years, you got cleanup, you got trees, you got development costs. Once you get all that, we will not be able to sell the lots for as much as we will have into the property. You have a, it's just like anything else. You have to get a certain number in order to break even. It's like a restaurant. If you don't sell enough hamburgers, you don't, you don't make any money. So once you get over that certain number, you start making money. If you had 125 lots, we, I mean, it just wouldn't work. It's not going to work.
So, and you're saying, even if you didn't build a million-dollar, million-dollar-plus homes, I mean, I'm talking about estate homes, large homes, you're saying you can't sell those homes?
What I'm, okay, first of all, we're not talking about building the homes ourselves. We're talking about developing lots and selling the lots. So you aren't talking about a lot. Okay, take an example of down in Port Orange, off of Hensel Road. They just had a one-acre development site that was developed one and a half years ago. They've sold five lots in that amount of time because of the cost associated with those larger lots. I can tell you right now, at our side, that would take 40-something years to sell out our property. We can't do that. Okay, you're going to have, once you develop it, you're going to have taxes that are going to go up. You're going to have, you're going to be appraised on each individual lot. You're going to be assessed on those. You're going to have to maintain the roads. You're going to have to maintain all the landscaping. It's just, there's a certain point that you have to get to in order to make it work. It's just like the lowlands across the street. They had to put a certain number of units on that little piece of property over there to make it work. It's the same thing here. You can't just sit there and put two houses on it and make it work. And I would agree that you can put some estate lots or some big, you could have some in there. You could have 20 or 30, but you can't have 200 or 300 on it.
And for the record, I'm sorry, Commissioner Persis to interrupt, but Carl Veely.
I'm sorry, yes, Carl Veely.
Thank you.
No, I understand what you're saying. I don't want to belabor the point. I know what you're saying. I guess, I think Ormond Beach is a different place, and I don't like comparing Ormond Beach to Port Orange or what happened there. But I do hear what you're saying. I'm not trying to be argumentative or anything with you. I'm just, yeah.
200 sales and we'll build it.
I'll sell for it now.
You know, we'll come, they will come. I mean, if we could get people to say, we'll buy a lot and put down a deposit that is non-refundable, I'll be happy to go that route.
Yeah. Well, and, okay, thank you for answering that. And it's just, you know, I do have concerns about the sizes of the lots. You know, I don't, I don't like the narrow, newer lots. And I think buffers should always be irrigated, always, not just for a couple of years. I would be concerned about that as well. And I just want to point that out.
Can I address any of those issues for you?
Of course.
Okay, the buffer. There's a buffer out there right now. If you had driven out there, you would see that in areas, there's more than 100 feet in some areas of natural native vegetation that's grown for the last 20 years there with no irrigation at all. Our proposal is to mimic what's already out there and to put in natural or Florida native vegetation that once it gets rooted, will grow naturally, just like what's out there is. That way, we won't have to use the precious water that we have, all the reused water, because that's how it's going to have to be watered unless you want to dig wells, which we don't want to do. We'd rather use the reuse, which we already have an agreement of over a million gallons that we could use that we have in a contract with the city. So that's with the buffer. We want to make it so that it'll be there forever. You, natural stuff doesn't need to be irrigated, okay? The lot sizes, when we met with everybody, they said, put your larger lots on the outside and the smaller lots on the inside. So that's what we've done, that we put in smaller lots. But when you look today, if you talk to any builder, today's estate lots are 80 feet. I mean, it's just a fact that everything has gotten so expensive, everything has gotten smaller. So what we did is we put the larger lots on the outside. We also put this 50-foot buffer so that the person behind us won't even see it. If we have this buffer there, you will not see that house after a few years. You will at the beginning, but you won't at the beginning. The other thing is, is when we have an 80-foot lot, we have agreed to put in the same side yard setbacks as the existing R2 has, which is 20 feet, eight and 12, so you have. So what we now have is, in every 400 feet, we have an extra 20 feet of side yard setback or open space compared to Timoca Oaks's requirements or the R2 requirement. So you actually have more open space between the homes than you do if we go to the 100-foot-wide lots. Because then what we're done, we're forced, what's happened over times is when Timoca Oaks was built, the houses were ranch-styled homes that were built sideways, okay? Now, homes are built lengthwise. are built lengthwise and on the lot. So what we have is a smaller wide width on the lots, and we have more setback. So, that's what's changed over time. And whatever we decide to do, we're not going to be able to do that unless we go with a lot that's 100 feet wide, 100 feet deep, and then you'll go to the wider lots, like, more like Timoca Oaks.
Okay. Thank you for answering those questions. And I'll just, I will just end with that. My, my concerns are, again, with the traffic, the condition of the bridge, and then the density, just the density of this development. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner, Commissioner Sargent?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have just a couple of questions, and then obviously a discussion. What would the maximum height be for these homes? Are we talking a two-story, three-story? I know that y'all are just going to sell the lots.
35 feet, I think. Yeah. Same as the R2 adjoining zoning.
Sure. On the sidewalks, is, would there be possible to do, I grew up riding around in the, in the trails as a young kid, and all the sidewalks and the trails run behind the homes. Is that something that could be done to keep traffic, or keep, you know, pedestrians and bikers off of the roads, because the roads are so narrow there, back by where the buffer is, putting the sidewalks back around that area?
Yeah, it's an interesting question. So, we're putting sidewalks throughout our project, and we're going to open them to the, to the, to the, all of the residents of the Timoca Oaks subdivision. We talked about doing some, some walking trails or multipurpose trails along this wide buffer that surrounds the golf course. And we got a real mixed review from the folks we were talking to. We had a lot of conversation. I think people who live on what was the golf course didn't want others, you know, walking through their backyard, if you will.
Okay. And I think the last thing I have, Mr. Mayor, might be half question, half discussion. But I've heard several times in the planning board, and heard it tonight too, you know, tell us what we, what we want. You know, I've heard that a lot. It's not what we want, it's what the residents want. And I think we've heard it's density and lot size. And that's what the residents want, not what we, the commission wants. So, I think we can leave that up for discussion items, but that's, I want to touch that.
Travis, I appreciate that as a comment, but I want to take it as a question. I didn't spend a whole lot of your time dredging up all of the questions and answers because I thought they're in the, in the record. I think Mr. Spraker has said on numerous occasions that all of the different calculations of density that have come into play in this conversation were settled by him to match what we have shown you, which is we have the lowest density in the area. And if he doesn't want to put a period at the end of it, I will, because I don't think he's going to say anything otherwise. So, I think that's really important. We keep talking about density. We're the lowest density of everyone. And it's debatable to some people, but not to your city staff. That's important.
Commissioner Tolland.
Thank you. You all did, one advantage of being fourth is a lot of the questions are asked, so thank you. But I do want to talk about the density a little bit. And this is for Mr. Spraker, please. So, we've heard a lot of, we've read in our packet, and we've heard a lot about the density. Would you please just go over a little bit of the calculations and your analysis of resident Mr. Tyler and what some of his comments were, just to, like, in a succinct way?
Right. So, my understanding is the calculation that was performed basically excluded, well, included 84 acres in, in the Timoca Oaks subdivision, which has a land use of open space conservation. So, under our comprehensive plan, the open space conservation land use is not awarded any density. So you can't, you can't do a gross density calculation for a land use that doesn't allow any density. You can do, you know, if you want to do an overall gross density and say that if you took the entire acreage, you can certainly come up with that number. But when we're looking at it from a planning perspective, we can't award density to something that is, has a land use of open space conservation. And if you want to include the golf course in the calculation, you can certainly do it. But the golf course was platted, it's a separate lot of record. That is a, you know, decision of how you want to apply density. The way we have historically provided density is the land use, the acreage, and the number of lots. This property doesn't have open space conservation land use. So they don't have any wetlands, they don't have any floodplains. So, you know, it's a, it's a pretty simple calculation, you know, acreage and units gives you the density.
So, how do you address what Michelle Zirkobach said about she pays taxes on that land? That's not considered part of that in our code, is what you're saying?
Right. City planning staff doesn't deal with property assessment and everything. We deal with land use and zoning. So the land use would not allow you to go, because my guess is most of those are wetlands that are, you know, part of the Timoca River. So, yes, they have every right to do docks and, and, you know, enjoy the land as part of their property, but only from a land use perspective. And we don't do property taxes. You can't count it. And, and, you know, you're dealing with a subdivision that was built in the 70s versus a subdivision that's built today. You know, they don't have a lot of the requirements, and it's not good or bad, but they just didn't have, like, the open space and the other requirements that are, are part of our current land development code.
Okay. Thank you. Appreciate that. So, traffic was discussed quite a bit. I have a comment about, I want to talk about the buffer, but before I do that, Randy, this is for you. Is he allowed to, he can participate, right?
You're asking him a question?
Yes, ma'am.
Because now we're right into questions. We'll save comments for discussion.
This isn't a comment, it's a question.
Okay, perfect.
Okay, thank you. So I've heard multiple times, and it's been in the packet from residents, the discussion about the golf course being perpetual as a golf course and the covenants. Can you just explain that to me and your analysis of it again?
So, from the historical research that we have performed, the golf course, when it was constructed, had a restrictive covenant that prohibited the development of a property. It allowed the HOA to release the covenant. In 1976, our research indicates that that in fact occurred. HOA released the covenant. And however, in spite of the release, the course continued to operate as a golf course for many years. And then when the course stopped stopping use as a golf course, then in 2006, there's an application to have it rezoned to PRD. So there's been some discussion as to, well, why didn't the, the golf course have its own zoning as opposed to the R2? And, and I don't know the answer to that question, but it could well be that it didn't need one because it had the protection of a restrictive covenant. The applicant has provided a title commitment, title policy in the record that shows that there are no liens or restrictions or covenant. So, that's something that they have provided to us. So, to the extent that some residents believe that there were errors that may have been performed in the release of that covenant back in 1976, that's not for this commission to decide now. The evidence we have is that there is no covenant. And that would be indicative from the 2006 PRD development order that was approved, that tried to reinstate one before that development order expired.
Okay, thank you. So, my last question would be for, is Don Spence here today, tonight?
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioner. My name is Don Spence.
All right. So, Don, thank you so much for being here. I know you are well-respected in community for your work, and particularly in your work in native plants. And this commission knows that that is definitely something I'm very interested in. So I want to talk about the natural buffer. And, and to me, nothing is more beautiful than a natural buffer. But my question to you is, and we, we do need to, it's proposed to insert new plantings within that buffer to create that buffer. So my question to you would, how many years would it take before that buffer would provide that desired result for the residents?
For the trees that we intend on planting, for them to reach maturity, you're looking at 10 years. But over that time, they're eventually going to create a canopy, and there's then space underneath. So, we're not relying on the trees that we're planting as the major screening event long-term. That is what we're using the shrubs for. And so the shrubs will be planted in such a way and at such a size that I think within five years, there'd be significant screening. The code requires, I think, 40% opacity, you know, the screening of 40% over three years. But it doesn't discuss height. So, I think we can get to both the screening and the opacity within three years, but a mature height of a shrub, like privet or wax myrtle, is going to be pretty close to five years.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry.
Deputy Mayor, yes.
And this is just a point of clarification. Prior to my questions or what have you, would you like me to give disclosures?
Well, now that we're done with questions, and, thank you, Commissioner.
I don't know if there are comments or questions.
You answered all my questions. I was going to start with disclosures with Commissioner Tolland and just go down the line if that's.
So, yes, I would like to disclose that I have met with the Timoca Reserve team.
I have met with Rob Merrill, the development team. I took a ride with Ray Barshay and Carl Veely out on the property with my sons. And I have to disclose that my son took a lemon. I don't know if I need to do anything about that, but he did take a lemon. I think it's under the $5 mark. I also met with several residents as well. Thank you.
Thank you. I met with Rob Merrill. He brought the entire development team with him. Let's see, Jim Rose and Tom Horofsky I met with, Rennie and Missy Herrera I met with, Mary Greenleys I met with, Charlie Lydecker I met with, Carolyn Davis I met with. And some of these meetings were 30, 40 minutes, some were five minutes. Jim Cameron, very brief meeting. And then I did also take a ride and enjoyed very much a ride of this beautiful property with Ray Barshay and Carl Veely. Thank you for, thank you for that. Yes, ma'am.
So I didn't know we were disclosing everything. So I have taken a ride with the part, with the team a while ago. And I met with Mary Greenleys, Michelle Zirkobach, Carolyn Davis, I'm drawing a blank, Michelle, Missy Herrera, and various others.
There's so many.
I'm sorry, I wasn't prepared for that. But thank you.
All of them, but yes, thank you. Commissioner Persis?
Yes, I met with Rob Merrill and his entire team. I met with Carolyn Davis, Missy Herrera, Jim Rose, Mary Greenleys, et cetera. I can't remember every single person's name that was in the group with Missy Herrera and Jim Rose, but I did have a meeting with them.
Mr. Mayor, I did meet with Mr. Merrill and the development team. I also met with Missy Herrera, Michelle Zirkobach, and Tyler Brown, as well as Carolyn Davis. And I did have, I've had several just brief discussions with Jim Rose and a couple with Mary Greenleys.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Randy, we're at the point now where we're going to head into discussion and then vote on this. Got about 32 minutes left by my calculations, but if you can just give us a little guidance as we head into that?
Yes, sir. Give an hour and limitation on the time. I'll be very brief. You know, you've had a lot of evidence to sift through. You're the final decision maker. You get to determine what's relevant to the issues. I do want to remind everybody that, you know, this is an application for development order under PRD zoning. It's not the R2. There's been some discussion about that. And I think it is important to note for the record that the applicant has submitted an application to rezone the property concurrent with the PRD development. I think you can note that. But you should not base your decision this evening on what the developer may or may not be able to develop, assuming that the property is rezoned, assuming that this application is denied, and assuming that the developer moves forward with the R2 zoning in the event that this application is denied. So your decision should not be based on that because it's just too speculative. But I do think it's important to note that Rob Merrill has indicated that that is concurrent. I think that much you can, you can note. So, your decision needs to be based solely on a comprehensive evidence standard as applied in Land Development Code and the comp plan. And one thing, I think this would be a good time to kind of go through some of those elements very briefly because we didn't really discuss them at the beginning of the meeting. But they're described on pages two and three of the ordinance. And I'm just going to touch on them briefly because it's important to recognize those as part of your final decision. So the first one is whether the development conforms with the requirements of the Land Development Code, will not create undue crowding beyond conditions normally permitted in a zoning district or adversely affect the public health, safety, welfare, or quality of life. The second one is whether the development is consistent with the comp plan. Third one is whether the development will not adversely impact environmentally sensitive lands or natural resources. The fourth one is the proposed use will not substantially permanently depreciate the value of surrounding property, create a nuisance, or deprive adjoining property of adequate light, air, or create excessive noise, odor, glare, or visual impacts. And the fifth one is whether there are adequate public facilities, which would include roads, sidewalks, bike paths, groundwater, wastewater treatment, drainage, fire police, parks, recreation, those sorts of things. The sixth one is ingress and egress, and the traffic patterns are designed to protect and promote motorized vehicle and pedestrian bicycle safety. The seventh one is that the development is functional, functional in use and space and is aesthetically acceptable. And the eighth one is that it provides for the safety of occupants and visitors. And the ninth one is that the use of materials and architectural features will not adversely impact the neighborhood and aesthetic, aesthetics of the area. So you all get to decide based on the evidence that you've received whether or not the developer has met its burden. And if you do believe that, then, you know, your motion should be to approve the application as presented. However, if you believe that the applicant has not met the burden, then you could make a motion to deny the application. And in that instance, likely what would happen, as Mr. Merrill's indicated, he would move forward with the R2 application. Here's a third option. If you believe, based on the evidence that you've heard from all the parties, that there is insufficient evidence or insufficient information for you this evening to make a, an affirmative decision to approve or to deny, but yet you think that there might be some information out there that you would still like to have, a third option might be for you to remand this back to the planning board for further considerations within the parameters that you've discussed, lower density, traffic, those sorts of things. So, that may be an option that you wish to consider. And I think Mr. Merrill may have invited that because he certainly has recognized that this is a negotiated agreement. So, those are your options.
Thank you, Randy. And we'll start discussion with Commissioner Persis.
Yes. Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. First of all, I'd like to thank the residents of Timoca Oaks and the surrounding areas for coming to this meeting. Please know your thoughts matter and your passion is inspiring. During the last few years, you have endured a tremendous amount of anxiety and stress, and I commend you for your astute research and your positive decorum during this difficult time. Timoca Oaks is in Zone 3, and I am honored to be your city commissioner. After five years of service, I can proudly say, regardless of the zone from which we were elected, all of us in this commission, every single one of us, including the mayor, do our homework, and we want what is best for Ormond Beach residents. You voted me into office to be your voice, to make sound decisions, and that is what I have done and will continue to do. The people who have spoken tonight raised critical concerns and logical reasons to reject the proposed development of Timoca Reserve. To date, I have not heard from one, one resident in Timoca Oaks, one resident in the trails, or any of the surrounding neighborhoods who are in favor of this proposed development. Our professional city staff did not recommend this proposed development. The dedicated people on the Ormond Beach Pl-. The dedicated people on the Ormond Beach Planning Board voted to deny this development 7-0. The proposed development appears to have serious safety concerns such as ingress and egress issues which will spread through Main Trail, Aracoy, and Rio Pinar, the design of the traffic circle or diamond, Escondido residents blocked in due to traffic buildup, and narrow roads, and an old wooden bridge, chemical runoff should development occur, and short driveways. This is a distinctive piece of property in a desirable location, and we have only one chance to make a right decision. I am a no vote on this proposal, on this proposed development as presented. Let's remember in 2006, the Ormond Beach City Commission approved the PRD for this location, which allowed 122 residential units with a golf course. The extension for this plan finally expired in 2014. My point is, an Ormond Beach City Commission approved the plan then, and an Ormond Beach City Commission could approve a plan now, however, not the plan which is before us today. Mr. Mayor and members of the commission, my recommendation is to either deny this outright or send this back to the planning board so they can review a new development application with a substantial reduction in units compared to what is being proposed. The project should be designed to improve safety and traffic flow, to have units which enhance and exceed existing housing, should provide a landscape plan which provides beautiful buffers with ample conservation and recreational space. Perhaps most importantly, my hope is a new application would reflect the uniqueness of the property and the special attention it so clearly deserves. Thank you.
Thank you.
Who wants to go next? Commissioner Sargent?
Sure, Mr. Mayor. I echo exactly what Commissioner Persis said. There's serious issues that I have as well. The entrance reminds me of the US 195 corridor. It's outdated. It has serious safety issues, the density. With that, Mr. Mayor, I think, you know, given the unique characteristics of this project, I would like to send this back to the planning board for a project more like what was approved back in 2006. I don't know if you need a motion on that or if you want to go through comments first or...
Let's go through comments first and then...
Sure.
Yes, ma'am. Commissioner Tolland, thank you, Commissioner Sargent.
So, first of all, I did get a text today and tonight, and Doug Thomas, who is the chairman of the planning board, wanted to send his thoughts that he was, wanted to say that he was sorry he couldn't be here tonight, but he just wants the audience to know that he does care. And as another note, I have lived on Temoca, shoot, I lived in Temoca Oaks on Oakmont Circle when I first moved here in 89, and then I went to, moved in Talalua for about five years after that. My father taught my oldest kids how to golf on that golf course, and at that time, I was running marathons, so I used to run that loop all of the time. So, I'm very familiar with the property and the concerns you all have as residents. The former golf course is nestled within Temoca Oaks community. It's extremely special and unique. It should not be considered a simple infill project protecting urban sprawl, but rather a new development project that will have a lasting impact in our community. The folks of Temoca Reserve have spent endless hours developing what they feel is a neighborhood suitable for this space and complementary to Ormond Beach. They've had multiple site plan review meetings, lively neighborhood meetings, have had three very long planning board meetings, and individual meetings with stakeholders. And each meeting echoed the same opinion: too dense, too much traffic, not compatible, insufficient buffer, no diversity in architectural design, and concerns regarding short driveways. Some folks are of the opinion that there's a strong argument that the golf course should remain a golf course forever and that there are restrictive covenants associated with that property. Some Temoca Oaks residents have spent an unbelievable amount of time, effort, resources to oppose this development. They've done their own deep dive into density, employed outside counsel, recorded a complete assessment of property values, sold as a golf course community, and extensively researched our land code and ordinances. All show their passion and concern in the importance of this decision before us. We as commissioners represent you, the residents. You put us in office to voice your concerns and support you. It's our duty to understand the issues and the proposals on our agenda and to carefully evaluate the rights of the developer with regard to the former golf course. But we also cannot negate the rights of the resident. The city has adopted a low-density residential plan that is to protect the character of our community and provide open space for recreation and the environment. We have policies that address preserving the character of our neighborhood by not allowing intrusions of land use, policies that encourage retention of natural vegetation and provide open space, policies for compatible land uses, policies that ensure safe and convenient traffic flow, and policies that direct growth away from environmentally sensitive areas. Mr. Veely, Mr. Barshay, and Mr. Sheldon have a right to develop this land. The planned residential development is the appropriate zoning type, and the entire property has a low-density residential land use. But just because they have the right to develop the property does not make this proposal in front of us acceptable. It simply is not compatible or a good fit for this very special and unique property. Let us remind ourselves of the conditions within the code that the developer has not met according to planning staff, thus recommending the denial of the issuance of the development order by a vote of 7 to 0. They reference compatibility, lot size, thus density, buffers, flawed traffic analysis and discussion regarding the existing diamond, the architectural design, no cookie cutters, and the length of the driveways. I would like to see this property remain zoned a PRD, but incorporate the low and incorporate the low-density residential plan protecting the character of the community. More specifically, I would like this project to go back to the planning board and create a smaller-scale impact community similar to what was approved in 2006. That project garnished support of the planning board, the commission, and most importantly, the residents. It boasted 122 homes centrally clustered and away from the line of sight of existing homes surrounded by open space or golf course. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner and Deputy Mayor Bryle.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I will echo a lot of the sentiment from my fellow commissioners. I will say this. Having served on the planning board for many years, you get to know a lot of people. And, you know, Rob Merrill has been before us many times at the planning board level, been before us a few times since I've been on the city commission, and that whole development team, Dwight Durand, Sands Lassiter, they're consummate professionals, and I have a lot of respect for you guys. I also have respect for the students, for the ownership, Carl Veely, the hometown boy, as well as Ray Barshay, Mr. Ruben, I don't know you, Mr. Ruben, but I understand that you're a decent fellow, and we appreciate, you know, your interest in Ormond Beach. But I also appreciate our residents and for y'all being involved and coming out on this very important issue. I agree, you know, I commend the developer, the development team for doing the public meetings. They went kind of above and beyond because they did more than one or two, they did three or four. I know because I was at most of them. And they took community input. They took resident input. I think part of the problem is you heard what may have been wanted, but it didn't translate into the compatibility of the lot sizes, the lot widths, and the density. I think those were the concerns that the neighbors or the residents of Temoca Oaks have had and have always had, and not just Temoca Oaks, but the Trails and just even residents from around the rest of the city. I sincerely agree that I would prefer this to go back to the planning board. I do agree with, I think, planning board member Mike Scudero. He didn't think that a reduction of four lots was a significant change to what was presented from the second planning board meeting to the third planning board meeting. And I also agree with Chairman Thomas that this is just too important to decide quickly. And I'm not saying that we just keep kicking the can down the road, but I think there's a potential that we can come up with a lot better project that I think is much more acceptable to everyone. So, I would be in favor as well of sending this back to the planning board as being reviewed as a PRD. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. And Commissioner, you've made it easy on me. Thank you for your leadership and all your hard work on this issue. We've been following it for a couple of years now, and so, tonight, I think, Commissioner Persis, you nailed it, we've got one chance to get this right. And so, taking a little extra time doesn't bother me one bit. I agree that this unique piece of property deserves the PRD zoning that's appropriate for it. It makes sense based on everything I've read and heard. And so, I too support the PRD remand to the planning board for additional consideration. It's obvious, you know, with a staff denial and a planning board denial and with all of the folks that we've heard from, it's just too dense and there's too many traffic concerns that haven't been addressed yet. I think by remanding it, a lot of those issues can be addressed, and I base my decision on not only the staff report, but our Land Development Code and the Comprehensive Plan, having reviewed our entire packet, the planning board minutes, all the speakers tonight from both sides, everything that was presented. I counted a few different times from a low of 192 people to a high of 206 people here this evening. We had 27 cards, 24 against, 2 for, and one didn't end up speaking. So, overwhelming rejection by the speakers as far as all of the various issues that they brought up. And so, Commissioner Persis, did you want to make that motion to remand the PRD zoning back to the planning board for further consideration with the direction that everybody's provided tonight?
Yes. Yes, I make a motion that we send this back to the, remand this back to the planning board for further consideration.
Second.
Point of order?
Should we talk about it staying as a PRD?
Before you guys proceed, can I get a point of order, please, from Randy? And Randy, if you want to resolve...
This is the commission's time, Rob, so...
I'm asking the mayor then. May I ask Randy if a point of order?
No, you don't get to ask that question. This is a time for the commission to make its decision, and this is a...
Can they send us back to the planning board involuntarily is the question?
Yes.
Okay. Have at it.
Commissioner Tolland.
Do we need to add that we wanted to remain as a PRD in that motion?
I thought we did.
Well, that was the motion, though. It is a part of the PRD. It will remain a PRD until it's not a PRD, so...
Okay, thank you. I'll make a second then.
All right. Any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Commissioner Bryle.
Yes.
Commissioner Tolland.
Yes.
Commissioner Sargent.
Yes.
Commissioner Persis.
Yes.
Mayor Partington.
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Commissioner. Thank you, everyone who came out, whether you're for or against, and we will close the public hearing, all of the public hearings, and move to reports, suggestions, and requests. And tonight, we start with Assistant City Manager Claire Whitley.
Good evening. I'll just want to highlight a couple of important events coming up as we approach the holidays. On Thursday, November 9th, the city is hosting a Veterans Day celebration luncheon. This is at the Ormond Beach Senior Center. It's an afternoon event. It consists of a short program, music, and lunch. Tickets are limited, so please contact Leisure Services for tickets. Veteran tickets are free and guests are $7. We also have the Home for the Holidays nighttime parade, and the city is accepting applications for the nighttime parade. It's scheduled for Saturday, December 9th at 6:30, and the theme this year is "A Groovy Christmas." Again, please contact Leisure Services for more information. And lastly, Ormond Beach Main Street River Fest is taking place November 18th and November 19th. The annual River Fest is in Rockefeller Garden and on the north lawn of the Casement. The event offers free admission. It includes live music, seafood options, a kid's zone, fishing clinic, and more. And because of the holidays, your next regular commission meeting will be on December 5th. Enjoy the holiday. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Claire. Any questions for Claire? Commissioner Persis?
Yes, what about the, on November 11th, the Veterans Day at the Ormond Beach Museum at Oman? Do you know about that?
That's a Saturday.
Is that for...
On the 11th, yep.
For the hometown heroes?
At 11.
For the hometown heroes?
No, that's Veterans Day celebration at Oman.
They always have it, yeah.
Yeah. It's not really a city...
At the Ormond Memorial Art Museum.
City event. It's put on by Oman, but we always participate.
Yes, okay, November 11th on Veterans Day. I didn't know about it.
Thank you, yep.
Thank you.
Anyone else for Claire? Assistant City Attorney, or I'm sorry, just emoted you, Randy. City Attorney Randy Hayes.
That may not be a bad thing.
These days.
No, sir, nothing more. Thank you.
All right, thank you. And tonight, we start with Commissioner Tolland.
All right, well, thank you. I just wanted to make some comments of Thanksgiving since it's the season, and I just figured it was appropriate. I wanted to thank the residents for their efforts to protect this unique property of Temoca Oaks and staying vigilant throughout the process. I want to thank staff for their continual evaluations of the property to be developed and providing clear communicate recommendations. I also want to thank the planning board under Doug Thomas doing the heavy work of weighing through neighborhood meetings and comments. On another, that was for Temoca Oaks. On another subject, I want to thank staff and especially our city attorney for providing guidance on the issues that are critical to the well-being of our city, and appreciate the guidance on Belvedere and the work that's being done alongside our county. I do appreciate the good news of the FDEP permit going to administrate up a judgment. And there's thankfulness for the thorough work on the Hunter's Ridge issue protecting our residents' assets. I also want to thank my fellow commissioners and mayor for their dedicated work and efforts to represent the residents of Ormond Beach and being present to them. They are our most valuable asset, and we are blessed in this city. And if you don't mind, I do want to close my comments with a prayer of Thanksgiving. Heavenly Father, we bow our heads to you and pray. We give you thanks for all that you've done. We thank you for our beautiful town and grateful for the residents that work and play in our community. Bless us now and keep us safe from harm as we travel during the upcoming holidays. We ask this in your name. Amen.
Commissioner Sargent?
Well, it's hard to follow.
I'm sorry. I was emotional when I wrote it.
Goodness. You know, today, our police officers had an incident over on Andy Romano Park, and I just, you know, my thoughts and prayers are with everyone that was involved with that incident, and thankfully, none of our officers were hurt physically, I'm sure. Emotionally, it'll be a long healing process, but just thankful that no one got hurt there. Veterans Day is coming up. Just remember, freedom isn't free, and if you see a veteran, thank a veteran. You know, we, when you look around what's going on around this country, we are very blessed to live in America, and I think a lot of people take it for granted, and I think it's very important to thank our veterans during this time and all year long. And with that, Mr. Mayor, I'll say goodnight. Oh, one last thing. A big shout out to Stephen Sprager. I mean, geez, how many times do people say thank you? So, thank you.
But who did you shout? I didn't hear...
Stephen Spr...
Steven.
Oh, yeah.
Thank you, Commissioner Sargent. Commissioner Persis?
Thank you, I'll be, I'll try to be real brief. I also wanna thank Stephen Spraker for always being there and just being, answering my questions quickly and, you know, just succinctly, it's awesome. And the same with Randy Hayes, we're so, we're so fortunate to have them, along with Joyce Shanahan and Claire, I mean, we have the best staff, it's just absolutely incredible. I also did get a call from Doug Thomas today. He is having surgery, I don't think he minds me telling anybody. He was so sad he couldn't be here, but he's having a pacemaker put in tomorrow, so he had, he has to be resting up, and I said, hey, that's, of course, more important, but he shows how dedicated, you know, he is to our city, it's wonderful. There's a whole lot of things that have been going on, I don't wanna even say, we've all been at so many different events lately, so I'm gonna just pass it over, it just doesn't matter. This was, this was a great night, I think we listened to our residents, and I think they felt heard, and I think that, that is so important to me, that they, they were heard, and, and we did the right thing, and I feel really good about tonight. So thank you, goodnight, and have a wonderful holiday.
Thank you. Commissioner, Deputy Mayor Bryley?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just, very quickly, again, thank our city staff and thank our residents for showing up and, you know, know that you're, know that you're heard. Real quickly, I guess I will just really quick touch on Saturday, was a great day with the ribbon cutting over at the, at the Dog Beach. I think that's fantastic. After thirty-seven years, we'll actually be able to have dogs back on a stretch of Ormond Beach. And then the, the veterans drive-through at the, at the Performing Arts Center was just absolutely fantastic. It was great to be out there with y'all and celebrate our veterans as they came through for their, their meals and their banners. So with that, Mr. Mayor, I'll say goodnight, thank you.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Bryley. Commissioner, you covered it well. It's ten-eleven, and we are adjourned. Thank you all very much.